Welcome to the Scarborough's zoning board of appeals, August ninth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. We have a vote call. If you're okay with that, would you be comfortable with that?
Sure.
Karen's not in today, she's on vacation.
Sure. Ms. Shue?
Here.
Mr. Blaze?
There.
Mr. Hebert?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Yeah.
Mr. Lloyd Darrell?
Present.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
And with us we have Mrs. Sossier as attorney for the town. Okay, first duty is let's stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands proclamation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Couple of housekeeping duties. I'd like to have the board allow us to move number twenty-six oh nine if both parties are here, which is a practical difficulty variance requested by Stephen Lynch, fourteen Pearl Street, so this is map U two parcel eighty-four two, first position as we have the attorney here for tonight to deal with that issue. Do we have all parties here?
Darrell in the hall, sorry.
Okay, let me take a second.
Well, we need to approve the minutes.
Yeah, so why don't I have a motion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes?
To approve this presented?
Second? Second? Discussion on the minutes. See none, all in favor?
I abstain.
Abstaining, okay, thank you very much. And we'll give them just a second to make sure they're okay. I don't want to push you guys. It's going to cause a little stress, but I thought it might be a little easier. And I apologize to the other two applicants, but trying to watch town taxes, so. Are you okay with us moving those around? Okay, so and both parties are okay with that? Starting, moving it up?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Now, I need a vote to be able to allow us to do that, so have a motion that I can move that to the first agenda item?
Motion to move item twenty-six oh nine to first on the agenda.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. All right, a little bit of research, update on this. This is a file that we originally did in September of two thousand and sixteen. It's come back to us after going to Superior Court and had some issues that needed to be addressed, and so it's been remitted back to us. Mrs. Sossier and Mr. Montal, let you two discuss what is taking place and what we are trying to accomplish today.
Sure, yeah, I'll give you a brief overview of where we are on this matter today.
Thank you.
So, as the chair mentioned, this was approved for a variance back in September of last year. That was appealed to the Superior Court. The parties briefed the case, but the justice did not reach the issues. The justice sent it back down, she remanded it to this board for additional findings. And I wrote a very brief memo which summarized the case and provided the case, but in essence, the court has asked you to do three things from my reading of it, and of course you can hear from the parties as well. The first thing is to make findings on the definition of practical difficulty. You may remember on the practical difficulty variance, it says there you have to meet the definition of practical difficulty, plus meet the seven criteria that are listed within that ordinance. In your original decision, you just had findings on those seven criteria and not the definition of practical difficulty. Let me read that to you. A practical difficulty is a case where strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance is sought would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone which is located, and also which would result in significant economic injury to the applicant. So that's what the court's asking you to make a finding on. Second, the court, in a footnote, the petitioner, the appellant, raised an argument in the appeal about whether there's a thirty-eight-foot building depth limit to buildings in this district, particularly for this type of building. And that's under the Higgins Beach code. There was some discussion, as the justice wrote in the opinion in the minutes, but there was not a finding on whether that was allowed, the depth as proposed was allowed in the ordinance or not. So you should discuss that issue and make a finding on that. And finally, third, at the very end of the opinion, the justice noted, the court noted, that you should determine whether, make findings on, quote, "each variance that was sought." So you had a general project that you created variances for, so one thing you should do is clarify whether your findings were for each of the variances or each of the areas of relief the applicant was asking for, or if you need to make additional findings for particular parts of the project. So that's just a decision I think you need to make. Those are the three takeaways I helped from the court, so those are your, that's your job tonight, is to in particular make a finding on the practical difficulty variance, clarify the thirty-eight-foot building depth, and also clarify whether your findings were for all of the, all of the, quote, variances, and if not, then make additional findings. My recommendation is that you allow, obviously you hear from the applicant via abutter and any other person in the party who wishes to speak on those issues. You do not have to open it up to all the other standards, the seven criteria you already made findings on. You can re-adopt those, in my opinion, if you'd like to. It's in your discretion if you'd like to hear more or make additional findings on this. So I think that's where we are today. And then, and then at the end, you make a decision whether the variance should be granted or not. The court actually vacated the variance, so you see, to the extent, if it's a, if you find in the positive on the practical difficulty, you grant it again. If not, you would deny it. So that's where we are tonight. Take care to answer any questions as you go through the process as well.
Is there a particular sequence that we should be addressing these?
I would just recommend taking them in order. It doesn't matter really, but I think, you know, if you're going to go through just the way that the opinion is written, I think you would make findings on the practical difficulty definition first, make a decision on the thirty-eight-foot length is next, and then clarify or add to your findings as it relates to, was that for all of the additions, or was there something else you needed to be specific about? And then, of course, I'd hear from the applicant first, the abutter, and then anyone in the audience, and then commence your deliberations.
What I'd like to do first of all, is four of the members that were here in September are still at the board, and Shue, myself, and I'd like to take a second with the two other members of the board to discuss whether or not you've had a chance to read the information, whether you feel comfortable in participating in this piece of the section, if you've done a good handle on what's going on with this meeting, and the history of the event. So why don't I start with?
So I have, I have read through all the information that was provided, and I feel, I feel educated on this enough to contribute to the discussion tonight.
I've also reviewed the case and understand it.
Does the board have any problem with either of you actively participating?
No.
Seeing none? We don't feel that, so, okay. But why don't we start off with dealing with the first question, which is the practical difficulty, the definition of practical difficulty? And if we can start, we'd like to start with the applicant presenting their situation and that issue, so feel free. Take the microphone, state your name and address, and we'll go from there.
My name is Jim Katsifakis, I'm counsel for Mr. Lynch.
Could you spell your name first, sir?
And it's certainly not the first time I've been asked to spell that. I'm with the law firm of Perkins Thompson in Portland, and representing Mr. Lynch in this matter. We agree that there's a very limited scope of what's before the board this evening. It's the findings on the practical difficulty, decision with regard to building depth, does it or does it not comply? The seven variance criteria have been found. You'll simply have to re-adopt them because the court has vacated your decision. And then the board will ultimately have to make a finding to grant the variance. One question that came up, though, is what exactly does the board have to do tonight? Because the court said the board should make findings with regard to all proposed additions. What does that mean? I, you know, you could, it could be that all of the findings that support granting a variance apply to all of the additions. So you just, you have one set of findings that governs everything, and simply you should say that if that's what you're going to do. You know, does the same circumstances support all of the variance requests, the three additions that are a part of this building? And that would be some, one way to address it if you find that that's correct. But before we go into the weeds on that, if we can talk about practical difficulty and what it means for a minute? You've got some other ordinance, some other variance applications before you tonight, and several of them are under the undue hardship test, which is a very stringent test, as you know. It's very difficult to get an undue hardship test variance in Maine law. And in the early nineties, there were a lot of takings, claims being brought against municipalities that their ordinances were too restrictive, their zoning ordinances took all the value of the property, and people were suing municipalities claiming that there was a regulatory taking. I suggested to the Maine Real Estate Developers Association that one way that we could avoid having all these takings claims would be if people could actually get a variance, and suggested that we could have a less stringent test for a variance. And I offered the law, as it was in New York, the pre-nineteen ninety-two dimensional variance standards from New York as an example. So that provided it to Merida, their lobbyists ran with it, and in nineteen ninety-seven, the Maine legislature adopted the practical difficulty test. It is intended to be less stringent than the undue hardship test. As Mr. Sossier explained to you, what it means under practical difficulty is that the strict application of the ordinance to the property, one, precludes the ability of the petitioner to pursue a use permitted in the zoning district in which the property is located, and to result in significant economic injury to the petitioner. Many municipalities in Maine have adopted home rule ordinances to incorporate this practical difficulty test. Portland, South Portland, and Scarborough have done so, and many other Maine municipalities. However, because it's still relatively new, there isn't a lot of case law telling us when a practical difficulty occurs. We have the Roe versus City of Port, South Portland case, where the State Supreme Court noted how difficult it was to give an undue hardship variance, denied, reversed the decision with regard to the undue hardship that had been granted there, and then said, you know, there's always a practical difficulty test that you folks could adopt. They did, and that went on. You know, Tool versus the City of Portland, there was a question about a practical difficulty variance, but it was about two of the criteria, two of the seven criteria, not about whether there was a practical difficulty. The real guidance we have is a superior court decision involving South Portland, Wyper versus the City of South Portland. It's a two thousand and five Superior Court order. Justice Warren decided that case, and what had happened is a variance had been granted, the board did not make a decision as to whether, what the findings were for a practical difficulty. The board probably felt, well, we're granting a practical difficulty variance, we found the seven criteria, there must be a practical difficulty. Justice Warren said, I don't, I'm not going to make findings on my own based on what's there, I'm going to send it back, just as Justice Mills did here, for determination of findings by the board. But he suggested in that decision what he might look to. He said, well, I could find, but I'm not going to because I'm not the board, that it might be the inadequacy of the existing residential structure, which is conceded by the parties, which could be that the existing structure didn't comply with setback requirements, that there was an inability to expand because it would go into areas that were prohibited because it was used by the septic, that it'd have to connect to the city sewer, that would be enormous expense. These were some of the things, he said, you know, maybe I could make a finding on this, but you didn't make a finding, I'm sending it back to you. So that's what the court has looked to in one other situation when the question was, is there a practical difficulty? So this work, this matters before this board tonight because of a variance that was granted, and we, you have to determine whether there's a practical difficulty and what those findings are. The entire building is located almost entirely within the setback, within the thirty-foot rear setback, it's about three feet from the rear property line. The variance has been applied for in order to update a building that has problems, it is not something that you would build today if you were seeking to build codes. And that creates some real limitations in its use, and you'll hear from Mr. Lynch about that. With note, though, in this Higgins Beach zone, permitted uses include single-family attached dwellings, accessory uses, municipal buildings in uses, and as to the existing dwelling, we know there's, it's non-conforming as to the front and rear setbacks. And there's a reason for it that Mr. Lynch will tell you about. We know that the building is almost entirely within the thirty-foot rear setback. There was evidence that was introduced at the first hearing that the ceiling is low in the kitchen, that one wall in particular on the out, of the kitchen leads to a very low ceiling that it's difficult to use. There are windows upstairs that don't provide sufficient egress. The interior stairway is both too narrow, about two feet wide, too steep, and these interfere with common uses of that existing dwelling and diminish its value. These issues, these problems, would be addressed by the expansion. That's already in the record, and you could look to that for your findings. But Mr. Lynch has some additional information. Since he'd like to do this piece by piece, I'd ask, if I may, if Mr. Lynch could just tell you some of the information with regard to the practical difficulty part of it, and Mr. Wilson, the architect, I believe, has a bit to add as well. So if I could turn that over to them, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Robert Stephen Lynch, the owner of fourteen Pearl Street, and thank you for your time this evening. I submitted in this, for the second meeting before you, a couple of, three documents that I want to very briefly explain. The first one is a photograph of my house, I think you have it in your package. This is actually a photograph from about eighteen eighty, those are my ancestors sitting on the porch, all dressed up at the beach, but that's what they did in those days. This is my house as it is today, in the exact configuration on the two sides you can see. Actually, if you saw the back of this house in eighteen eighty, it was substantially larger than it is today. But this is my house in its configuration and where it is today. And that's important because in the original days of Higgins Beach, you can see people, people owned their houses, but they didn't own the land. It was owned by Hiram Higgins, the owner of Higgins Farm. The second document I gave you was this plot of where, for the first time, when Hiram Higgins decided to sell the property at Higgins Beach, they broke it up into many fifty-by-a-hundred lots, and they superimposed that, unfortunately, onto my house. The house was there before the lot lines, and before Pearl Street. This is eighteen ninety-seven, you can see it on the document. So for no fault of my own, somehow, back then, those, that line was drawn within one to three feet of my rear line, and Pearl Street was built, how many feet, from the other one? So I didn't cause that, that's the history of it. And you see finally the third document, nineteen oh one, when my ancestors, Dr. Martin, actually acquired that lot, I think it's number sixty-six here. So that's why it is so non-conforming now. So, as a result of this, and the result of the way the house was built, and it was completely built by eighteen eighty, there's several uses of this home which would normally, which are permitted for a home in this zone, which I am not allowed to do because of these circumstances. Number one is renting my house for a few weeks in the summer, and as Mr. Fury does. And I want to be clear, Mr. Fury is an absentee landlord.
Sorry, I prefer to keep just the facts of this as opposed to any conversations about.
Okay.
It'll go both ways.
Okay, fair enough. Because of the danger of the stairway, and I've, and I had a tenant actually fall once, the liability I've been advised is too high to rent it without fixing these defects. Number two, I am self-employed. I'm an advisor to the municipalities throughout the state of Maine, northeast, in areas solid waste and recycling. I moved to this, to Maine, to Higgins Beach, as a full-time resident about two years ago. Previously, I always had a home office. When I looked into getting a home office for my home here, which is allowed in this zone, you have to ask for permission to do it, but my business is a very zero-impact business. All of my meetings are outside the home. I don't have meetings in my home, people don't come, but I would, it would nevertheless require general liability insurance on my home office, which to date I haven't been able to get because of the condition of the home. So there's a use that I can't have. Another use, normal repair and maintenance of windows and doors. The side of the building that's very low, I can't buy, go to Lowe's or Home Depot and buy a standard door, replacement screen door, or storm door, because it's too low. I have to have a custom-built windows and doors for that wall, which is very expensive. So these are both, these are some, there's others, but these are the ones I thought I'd talk about tonight. Uses that are allowed in the zone, that I'm prohibited from because of strict application of the setbacks, and also have significant economic injury to me. Now, talking about the depth of the building, although there were not findings still at the first ZBA board meeting, I think that's because Brian, in his comments on the record from that first meeting, said, that's not the problem. The depth of the building is fine, everything's fine, the problem is this building being so close to the back. But we, we all, I think Brian, Brian said that, it's in the record, and I think everybody thought it was a problem.
Just stop there for a second. I don't like you putting any words into his mouth if he wants to agree to that, that's fine. Is that consistent with what you believe, or is it?
Yep.
Go ahead.
We're not talking about building depth, it's more of anything.
Right. So you know what?
I just want to say, that's why, if Brian had said, no, it's a big problem, we need another variance, but that's not what's, okay. Another thing I want to mention, and it's the final thing. I have four abutters, you know, Mr. Fury, in, on the other street. Visually, there would be zero impact to him of my proposal. The three abutters that are next door to me, and two abutters on each side and one across Pearl Street, they're the ones that will see and hear and experience this expansion. They are all, they have all submitted letters of support, in fact, Allison Eckert, a non-family one, one of them's my sister, so you expect, you know, she would support it, but Allison Eckert, since these appeared and made testimony here, saying, this would be great, we're very happy, this is a modest improvement, he could have gone for a lot more in the permitted building envelope. We like Steve, he's been a great neighbor for many, many, many years. So thank you for hearing me out, and now I'm going to ask Walter to address a couple, the last few issues before us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Walter Wilson from Design Company.
I'm the one who's been drawing the plans on this project. There were two things I was asked to speak about, one being the square footage of the house versus the proposed house. The existing house with first and second floor has thirteen hundred and seventy-five square feet. The proposed house with the first and second floor is twenty-one hundred and fifty-four, has an increase of about seven hundred and eighty square feet, which represents about fifty-six point seven percent increase in the total square footage, so it's not a huge massive doubling of size of building. The other thing I was asked to talk about is the overall depth of the building on the lot, which Steve indicated was discussed at the first meeting. It was discussed, but it wasn't, didn't have any dimensions actually put to it, okay? The lot's a hundred feet deep. In the Higgins Beach zone, the front of the main structure has to be at least eighteen feet from the street, and the rear yard setback is thirty feet, total of forty-eight. So on the main building envelope, you have fifty foot, fifty-two feet in depth. Now, there is a restriction in the ordinance for the main principal mass of the house cannot exceed thirty-eight feet in depth. But then you're allowed to put a rear addition onto that that goes up to the rear setback line. So the main mass of the building is thirty-eight, then you can put a fourteen-foot addition on the rear of that, and the total building can be fifty-two feet in depth. Now also to that part of the ordinance, you also have to put a porch on the front of the house within that eighteen-foot setback to the main mass building. And that porch can be up to ten feet by code, so the overall mass of the building could be from front to back sixty-two feet in depth. Now that's not counting putting bump outside additions, rear porches, interval porches, and all the other components allowed in the code, that's the main building itself. So the principal building plus the rear additions, fifty-two feet in depth, and up to a ten-foot porch put in the front. And the porch in the front is not just a little stoop, it has to be, come out with a porch, has to have a roof on it, has to be at least fifty percent the width of the front of the house, so it's a substantial porch. The building that, I gotta grab my prints, can you just? Okay, the main building as it stands right now exists from the front of the house to the rear of the house is thirty-one foot six inches. To that, the plan, the plans call for a fifteen-and-a-half-foot expansion towards the front, which will get the overall depth of the building approximately forty-seven feet in depth, which is less than the fifty-two allowed in the ordinance. So the new building proposed is less than what any building is allowed to be on a hundred-foot deep lot. With that said, the fence that we're talking about is in the front of the house, not in the back of the house, not abutting the rear part of the property line. No changes ought to take place in the back shape of that house at all, other than putting new windows and sidings and new roof and trim on the house. The house stays the same. The majority of the changes are in the front of the house, and with the approval we got last time, we had a small extension of two feet on the side of the house, and that was to correct that low headroom problem in the kitchen where the outside walls five-and-a-half feet high. And that was needed to done, be done to correct that height limit. Theoretically, it could have gone farther and asked for more on the Um, theoretically, it could have gone farther and asked for more on the setback, but I didn't, because that's all we needed for it, and I didn't want to include any more than what was needed to fix that, that situation. Those were the two basic things that we looked at in the setback. Building in the front and that little side, two-foot addition in the side, which only affected about fifteen, sixteen feet on the length of the building. There was no encroachment on the rear yard, no encroachment from the existing building closer to the property line, and maintained the status quo of where it is now. Now, a couple of other things we did talk about at that meeting, just to refresh your memory, was about relocating the building and picking up and moving it, and, uh, the inability more than likely to move that building because of the way it's built. And it had been tried to, uh, picked up and put a new foundation on it before, and they had problems with it, because when it was picked up for the new foundation for a few inches, even then, some of the joints and stuff of the add-ons started falling apart. And in going through the building and looking at it and investigating the basement, I can see that you can't pick this house up and move it. Uh, if you did, it's going to be destroyed. Um, it can be improved where it is, which is what we're proposing to do. Also, um, Steve reiterated about the problem with the stairwell. Well, as we stated at the first meeting at the zoning board, this house has a center core of an old carriage house that was brought in and everything built around it, has the old-fashioned little partially curved ceiling still available from the old wagon. You can't relocate that stairway within that structure and put a new stairway in, meeting today's code, without destroying some other living part of the room or destroying a room that's attached to it as far as space goes, because everything is so small. And you can't put that stairway in the middle of the house where the old carriages, because that would completely destroy the structure of the carriage with, which the house is actually built around and over. The stairway you'd have to put in to meet code would be significantly larger than it is now. That's why on the plans, I relocated the stairway to the front part where the addition is, so we can put a code compliant stairway in that front addition, and then I worked out the circulation pattern for upstairs, so it wouldn't interfere with the bedroom sizes upstairs any more than possible. But relocating that stairway within the existing structure is basically impossible to do, unless you really have to take everything apart and destroy it to do it. That's not the objective of the owner would like, he'd like to maintain that old, old camp look on the inside of the house. And even if he did relocate the building, like I reiterated to, the cost of doing that is significant. You have to pick up the house, move it, store it, take out the foundation, fill in the hole, structurally compact it, put in a new foundation, all new utilities, and bring the building back again. It would probably be more than what the value of the structure's worth to do that. And that's easy to understand, you don't need any dollars and cents for that. And like I said, uh, in order to renovate that existing building to code in its current state, would not only be extremely difficult, it might be impossible when it comes to wall heights, window egress sizes, size of doors, stairways, um, and all that kind of stuff to put into that, to rehab that building, you'd almost have to rip it all apart to do it. Um, the proposal is the main part of the structures were put in the front of the house, new kitchen, stairway, new living space, and that was the reason for the, um, zoning board application before, which you approved, and, uh, the existing building was to remain as is, except for decorative problems, fix, fix up, maintenance, and patch up stuff. Um, like I said, there's no encroachment on Mr. Fury's property at all. Um, and like I said, adding a proper stairway within the building, which seems to be the key point of this renovation project, you have to move it outside the building to get a legal stair, outside the confines of the existing building to get a stairway in there that's going to work. Um, and that's what we proposed, and that's what the board approved, and we are still under the same dimensional standards and stuff that we were approved at last time.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to open up the public for, uh, the.
Any more questions from the board?
Do, any questions from the board first? I do, I have one letter that was sent to us, uh, from Thompson McCall and Bass. Any other letters, phone calls?
No, just the previous ones from last.
Previous ones, and I probably ought to read this in, is this from Kayla Warren?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's, that's, uh, yeah, that's part of the thing. There was one other letter for the market. No, over on that pile.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so there's two documents that we have. I'll read, uh, the first one, and it's tied directly to the comments, uh, that Mr., um, Wilson said regarding the, the moving of the structure. This is from, uh, I think it's Kyle Warren or Kayla Warren, I've heard it both ways. But, uh, for those who don't know, he's actually relatively well-known as far as a builder in this area. Um, hello, Mr., uh, hello Attorney McCall. I have conducted a drive-by look into the probability of successful lift onsite move of the structure. In addition to logistical considerations, I always have two primary concerns related to the structure itself. The first being the existing structural integrity of the building. I do not see anything on my drive-by to suggest that the current structural integrity of the building is compromised to a point that it would adversely affect the effort. With today's machinery and technology, only buildings that have been neglected and allowed to fall into extreme state of disrepair represent a significant challenge for a building mover. I would be concerned if the building had excessive rot, had been burned in a fire and not properly restored. I have not heard of the, that these conditions exist. If they do, I would recommend a thorough repair prior to the lift and move. Regarding the second concern, I look for excessively large windows, door openings that may have been done either without proper designation or, I'm sorry, design or construction. This is important because of the stress put on such openings. I do not see anything that concerned me relating to that issue. In summary, I am confident from a drive-by perspective that the building withstanded lift and onsite move with no more disruption than would normally be expected. The one area I am not as certain of is the small job on the side of the building. I simply could not see enough of it on the drive-by to render my opinion. I could move, it could move well, or maybe need extra attention. My construction experience is vast and nationally recognized. I have been an on-air national home improvement expert for CBS. I took over the position originally held by the venerable Bob Vila. I am an accomplished home improvement author with Double Day Publishing. I have, I've had a recurring guest appearances on home, uh, HGTV and more. As a developer and construction professional, I've had several projects that involve the need to lift and move structures. In fact, I'm currently working on an upcoming project that requires just that. Throughout my career, I have had to lift and move both residential and commercial structures. The structures range in age from twenty to a hundred and twenty years old. To date, I have not had a failed lift outside move, uh, onsite move project. Please advise if you would like any additional information, and his best. And then the other letter is from, uh, Lisa Jesman, Jasmine, um, and she is at, and she doesn't have an address, oh yeah, twenty-three Pearl Street. I would like to offer my wholehearted support for the various applications being considered for the property at fourteen Pearl Street. This is a very historic property dating back to when most roads went parallel to the waterline and not perpendicular to the water. Maintaining as much of the looking feel of the original structure while letting the owner update the property to current architectural standards would offer the best solution for the owner and for the neighborhood. We urge you to support, to vote in favor of Mr. Lynch's request sincerely. Those are the two letters, I don't think we have any other phone calls or any other letters. Okay. Um, anything you'd like to add at this point?
No, I think you won't want to open it up.
Why don't we open up to the public to speak, I know we have the at and the next door neighbor, feel free to come up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Fury. My principal residence is twenty-one Sheffield Street in Portland, Maine, but I own the cottage located at thirteen Ocean Avenue in Higgins Beach. My cottage, uh, my rear, uh, property line is Mr. Lynch's rear property line. Mr. Lynch's cottage is built right on that line. It's not three feet back. Some, in some places, it's right on the line, in some places, it might be a foot back. In two places, namely his propane tank and the entrance to his cellar, it is over the line onto my property. On a typical day, if I'm in my backyard or on my back deck, and there is conversation in the Lynch cottage, I can hear every word they say. This tells me that if I'm speaking on my deck, or in my backyard, or in my house in the summertime with all the windows open, they can hear every word I say. I'm opposing this project because by and large, it is not a correction of an older cottage, it is an expansion of that older cottage. And when you add on the porch in addition to the seventeen by twenty-six-foot expansion, it is, what it means for me, this variance will last forever. What this means for me is something on the order of two-thirds more noise, uh, two-thirds more occupants, two-thirds more conversation, stereo music, barking dogs, or whatever. It infringes on my privacy and, uh, my peace and quiet. Mr. Lynch acquired this property in nineteen ninety-eight. Shortly after that, he put it into the air. When he bought it, it had no foundation, he took out the wooden posts, he could have put that cottage anywhere he wanted to put it, but he put it right back down where it is now, right on the property line. He didn't move it, he knew then he was in violation of setback, he didn't move it. Now, he wants to enlarge it, which is just going to make the problem worse. The first issue is loss of use. My parents purchased that property in the nineteen sixties. The Lynch's were occupying it then as a single-family residence. We are now over fifty years later, it has been occupied continuously as a single-family residence. There is no loss of use, and I've, uh, presented the tax card to the board, there is no loss of value. It's a very valuable property, and most of the value is in the land, not in the building. I don't understand why we need a seventeen-foot by twenty-six-foot addition and a seven-foot, uh, by fourteen-foot porch to correct some problems in the old cottage. You don't need to do that to correct the windows, or you could, you could even fit the staircase in there, you could make that cottage more serviceable if, uh, that's what they were interested in. My principal objection is I don't think, I think the zoning ordinance should work for me as well as Mr. Lynch, as well as anybody else. And I'm entitled to, uh, peace and quiet, uh, I'm entitled to some privacy in my backyard. The major problem they're having is the maximum front setback. The maximum front setback is designed to bring development closer to the street, so that people like me can have some privacy in their backyard. So, this goes directly against that. Uh, I've set out that, what I've just said, and some other things in my letter to the board, and I, and I hope you will consider what is in that letter. Some of the more technical arguments I'm going to leave to my attorney, Ed McCall, who also submitted a letter, and he'll talk about some of these issues, and in particular, the building depth issue. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good to see you again. Uh, members of the board, my name is Ed McCall. I live just across the Spurlink River in the, in Cape Elizabeth. Um, so, it's pretty good nine iron to be, uh, under the federal property on the Scrubber side of the river. Um, I'm here on behalf of, of Mr. Fury and, uh, opposing, uh, this variance. I'd like to first talk about some of the legal issues to clarify how I see the, the remand from the Superior Court. I think what the judge has said is for each of the two variances that were, uh, initially granted, the board, the board needs to find that there's a practical difficulty, which is a, I think, a much more difficult test than Attorney Kathy Afikis has suggested, and each of the seven factors for each of those two variances. And then, then the board needs to address whether you need a third variance, because, and I'll talk about this in a second, but clearly there's a limit in this zone for this type of house of, of a thirty-eight-foot limit. You can get a back addition that would lengthen that, but expressly in that statute, back additions can't be in the rear setback. So, the point of that, from our perspective, is exactly this circumstance. The total mass of that house can only be thirty-eight feet deep, you can go longer as long as, as, as long as you're not in the rear setback, but if you're in the rear setback, you're limited to the thirty-eight feet. Then you have to address the, the, the very difficult standard for getting a variance. So, since there's expressly in your, uh, article four dash fourteen, and I mistyped the section in my letter, a limit to thirty-eight feet for this house, the fact that some other house that doesn't encroach on setbacks in the same-sized lot to go to fifty-two feet doesn't mean this house can go to fifty-two feet and be in the rear setback. It's written exactly the way it's written, as a thirty-eight-foot limit. So, turning to the, to the, uh, two proposed variances, the, the first one is a relatively small variance in the rear setback, and we're in any findings that there was a loss of use, unless you've got a variance for that addition in the rear, and it doesn't really make any sense. The bigger addition is in, is in the main part of the house going forward, and frankly, there isn't a proper showing or, or really any evidence of a loss of use if you don't get that addition either. Here's what loss of use means, that there's an approved use in this zone that you can't have without a variance. Now, as Mr. Fury just said, Mr. Lynch and his family have lived in that house a long time without a variance. They put a foundation under it right where it is, making it permanent, um, uh, and didn't enlarge the house or move it forward. You certainly can have a single-family house in the Lynch home, they have for a long time. Mr. Lynch has, has argued in his written submission here and in the court that there's faulty wiring, which is a problem, that does not require a substantial addition to the house to fix, that, that there should be larger egress windows upstairs, but his plans that they've submitted plainly show, and I explained this in my letter, those larger windows are all going in walls that aren't being changed, they're not part of the addition. So, you can solve the upstairs window problem without a variance. Uh, he also says the ceiling is low in that wing, which is on the, from the street, the right side of his house, the ceiling gets low because the, because the roof slopes down. You would get a higher ceiling if you shortened the building, not expanded it. The reason the ceiling is going up is because he's reconfiguring the roof. And also in his calculations, he's got a shed attached to the house now, which he's converting into interior living space, and that all happens in the rear setback. Um, so, he's taken a shed, making it a house, making the, making the roof taller to, to address those issues, but none of those issues is the loss of a use. It may be, it may be that the house is older and more charming than he would now like, he'd like it to stay charming and be bigger. But having a bigger house isn't a loss of a use. A use isn't, isn't a bigger house, everybody would always like a bigger house. A use would be that you can't live there, or you really can't, uh, have a home office there, which is a permitted use. But, uh, Mr. Lynch's argument, as I understand it, that he can't have a home office is, he can't, he, he says, without any evidence, that it's, and, and his written submission from his lawyer is, general liability insurance would be more expensive. He says he can't get it, but there isn't any evidence that he can't get it, and with all due respect to Mr. Lynch, and I met him, and, and seems like a nice guy, you can get in, you can get general comprehensive liability insurance to run your, uh, business out of your home, uh, with the issues in the house, but more than that, all of the issues with the house can be fixed without the variance. Uh, Mr. Wilson's explanation tonight that as to, as to the difficulty in fixing it was, you would have to use up other space to make the stairs bigger, and maybe you would have to substantially change the charming nature of the house that isn't, and the way, this is the way he put it, isn't what Mr. Lynch wants to do. And I, and I respect that Mr. Lynch should get to do what he wants to do on his property, but what he wants to do requires a variance, and you don't get a variance. but what he wants to do requires a variance, and you don't get a variance, you haven't lost a use if the house isn't going to look quite the way you want or have quite the feel that you want unless you get a variance. That's not loss of a use. The standard can't be met. Fortunately for Mr. Lynch, if he wants to preserve the core part of that house, he plainly can pull it forward on the lot and have a big addition. He can, he can have the charming house, he can have the charming house with an addition, or if he wanted to, he could take the house down, which is generally what's how I rented at Higgins Beach when I got divorced, was when all the houses were coming down and, and really big houses were going up in their place. And, and he could do that. And Mr. Fury isn't saying that Mr. Lynch has to do any one of those three things, but he has three clear options that don't require a variance and that don't affect a use, his ability to rent, his ability to have his home office, his ability to have better wiring, the bigger windows he proposes, the better ceiling, the better stairs. He can renovate that house right where it sits without changing the outside walls, put in the bigger windows, put in the, put in the better stair. He can pull it forward on the lot and do all of those things and make it bigger, or he could tear it down, as many people have done at Higgins Beach, and build a much bigger building inside the building envelope. And I've watched the tape of the last hearing. I wasn't here at the time, but I share-
Can I, excuse me, Mr. Wilson, could you please? Thank you.
I, I share, as some members of the board did, the, the respect for wanting to preserve an existing cottage and existing cottage feel. As much as I applaud that point of view and share it personally, it's not a consideration in your zoning ordinance that constitutes loss of a use or, or significant economic injury. You have a zoning ordinance that protects historic structures and gives some breaks from zoning for designated historic structures. This house isn't on that list. So Mr. Lynch hasn't, and, and there's some burdens that come with that. Mr. Lynch hasn't asked to have the benefit or the burdens of being on that list. So preserving his feel of his house, although understandable, isn't the proper basis for what he's requesting. There is, it's clear to me, there's a thirty-eight-foot limit on that house in your Section four dash fourteen. He can't have a rear addition and have it be in the setback, so the fact that somebody else on a different lot with a different house could have fifty-two feet in that zone doesn't change the way your ordinance is written, that the limit is thirty-eight feet. He needs to get a variance to go past thirty-eight feet. He wants to go to forty-seven or forty-eight feet, depending on what you read, and that would require him to show that without going beyond thirty-eight feet, he would lose a use, that some permitted use would be impossible on that property, and he would suffer substantial economic injury. And with due respect to Mr. Lynch and Attorney Kathy Afikis, as smart as any lawyer in town, you can't even argue with a straight face that being limited to the standard-length house in that region loses, costs you a use and results in substantial economic injury. The argument really just can't be made. So for those reasons, we submit that Mr., that Mr. Lynch, fortunately for him, has three options, and he ought to pick those options. Renovate the house exactly without expanding it, pull the house forward, or build a bigger house, if he wants a bigger house, in his building envelope. And those are all options readily available to him. They solve all of his problems, and they protect Mr. Fury's right to have peace and quiet and a backyard that doesn't end at his next-door neighbor's house. Under grandfather, under the nature of existing structures, when you buy a house and your neighbor's house is right up against your property line, you're stuck with that. But when your neighbor wants to substantially expand his house, he then has an obligation to address the burden that he's putting on your property by the fact that his house is right on the line. Under the law, it doesn't, in my mind, make a big difference that Mr. Lynch had the opportunity a decade or so ago to pull that house forward and instead flopped it right back down on the property line, but that's what happened. So the house is where it is, on a foundation, because Mr. Lynch picked it up, poured a foundation, and put it straight back down right where it is, and made that circumstance permanent. And made it permanent because he presumably was satisfied with the size and shape of the house he had on the foundation he poured a decade ago. Thank you very much. We'd be pleased to answer any questions that, that the board has.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind staying near to the microphone, that might be the case.
Okay.
In fact, same thing if you'd like to, Mr. Fury, if you'd like to be a little bit closer in case somebody has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so just going to give the, the board and some support here from either of the staff or, let's talk about what our, our mission here is.
We basically want to clarify whether or not we believe that, from the previous meeting and the information today, we meet the standard of a hardship.
Just, just one quick procedural issue. Make, I would make sure that there was no one else in the public that wishes to speak.
No, thank you.
And also, yeah, and you have discretion of the ordinance to allow rebuttal-
Thank you.
-from the other side. I believe Attorney Kathy Afikis has reserved the thirty-eight-foot issue to, to address.
It has been, it will, you're right. So it's, we'll allow both traffic. I'd rather have all the information out and make sure everybody's comfortable with what they've said and on the record. So again, what we're trying to do is establish that if you'd like to speak and discuss anything, feel free. And they may also want to come back, but feel free.
With regard to, to picking up the house and moving it, you know, the letter was received today with regard to a, to a drive-by analysis of whether it's possible. I think Mr. Wilson's already spoken to the fact that he's been there, he's crawled through the crawl space, he's seen the building, he knows that it would be difficult to move, it would be prohibitively expensive. You have that testimony from him. Moreover, moving the house is irrelevant, because that would go to whether there are feasible alternatives. You've already made that determination. It's one of the seven criteria. That's not why we're here tonight. We're not here tonight to revisit the seven criteria. The court has said, please make a finding as to practical difficulty, please make a finding as to the building depth. And so that's, that's why we're here tonight, not to look at the seven criteria, to redo what had done, had been done already. With regard to use permitted in this, the ordinance talks about whether a use is permitted in the zoning district. You know, let's go back to that practical difficulty test again. I know you've heard it a few times, and I'm going to bore you saying it one more time, that the strict application of the ordinance to the property precludes the ability of the petitioner to pursue a use permitted in the zoning district in which the property is located and results in significant economic injury to the petitioner. Mr. Fury and Mr. McCall are, are saying that what that means is to pursue a permitted use, such as a residential use, and because it's always been a residential use, then there's no issue. It doesn't say that. It says a use permitted. What are some of the uses that you commonly make of a house, a residence? You can rent it in Higgins Beach, that's done frequently. You can use it as your home occupation. You can use it for a home office. It, it isn't just permitted uses that are referred to here. And what Mr. Lynch has said is that the condition of the house and its state right now, as he's trying to preserve its original character, prevents him from being able to undertake uses that commonly are done with a single-family residential house. So if we look at the ordinance the way it's written, and not as others might wish it would read, it talks about the sorts of uses that, that Mr. Lynch has talked about already. Let's, I'm here, let's talk about building depth for one minute. Take a look at the character code, the Higgins Beach Character-Based Zoning District. If you take a look at the, it's in Article four. There's, there's basically a listing of the different types of structures you can build, and one of them in the Higgins Beach District is a house. And when you look at that, there's no written verbal definition of what building depth means. But if you look at the code, it says building depth thirty, thirty-eight feet max for the house. And then you look at where the letter B, which is what it's depicted as, it's shown it's along the length of the house, just the house, not any components, not porches, not additions, building depth thirty-eight feet. You turn to the next page, and then you see separate components being discussed, porches, wraparound porches, additions. It says Article four C, you see that for dimensions. Well, it's not there. Actually, it's in Article four E. So there's a little typo in the ordinance. And when you look under four E, it talks about what the length, the width, and the height can be of a porch and of an addition. So as Mr. Wilson said, you look at the base, the house, when you're looking at building depth. Thirty-eight feet is the limit? We're at thirty, thirty-one feet, thirty-one point seven feet. That's something that the board can interpret. We don't need, we don't need a variance. If you think we need one, we'll apply for one, but we think that it's a matter of interpretation of your own ordinance. Building depth just relates to the, the length of the house structure, the basic house structure itself, and we meet it. And finally, just, I was, you don't have to hear from me again, I hope, on this. Again, practical difficulty is intended to be a less stringent test than undue hardship. It doesn't mean that it's without any test at all. There is a test. It's in the ordinance. We've gone through it. We believe we meet that test. And I think Mr. Lynch may have a couple of factual matters to bring up, just to, to amplify what we're talking about here on practical difficulty.
Yes, so, yeah, it, it's true. I don't want to destroy the character and antiquity of this old photographer's wagon, which my ancestors put there in eighteen fifty, and now is our living room. It's pretty amazing. But it's not so much that I don't want to do that, but as, as Walter said, and clarify if you want, putting a code stairway, even if you destroy the old wagon, is, would require losing either a living room, a kitchen, or a dining room. I would have to decide if I have to stick with my existing footprint, which of those rooms I'm going to live without because I'm making room for a code stairway. To me, that's denying a use that it's permitted for. Secondly, this encroachment issue, I, I'd like you all to, I handed out a survey when we first met. It's a very recent survey. It makes it completely clear that there is no encroachment. You can look at it if you want, I think one of you guys is. The propane tank does not encroach. There's no cellar entryway, so it certainly doesn't encroach. My house is not on the line. Some places, it's about a foot. Some places, it's three feet. But it's just untrue to continue to repeat this. He's doubling the house. It's fifty-seven percent. The house is over the line. The propane, it's just not true, and you have lots of stuff already in the record to that effect. Another thing, not true, I did not buy the house in nineteen ninety-eight. It's been in my family, as you know, for a long time, and I acquired equity interest many, many years before that. It hasn't been occupied as a residence for fifty years. It's been a summer, rustic summer place until two years ago, when I moved in and made it my primary residence. So those are facts. That is truth. Thank you.
I'll, I'll try to be brief, and I'm going to sort of direct this at Phil. Phil, I think with respect to the findings that need to be made, I respectfully disagree with Attorney Kathy Afikis. Justice Mills vacated the board's decision, and in Attorney Kathy Afikis' letter, he pointed out the board would need to remake its findings. But I think the point of her remand is that the findings that were made last time around, even on the seven items, were made globally, and she, and she concluded, and I think instructed this board, you need to make findings with respect to the loss of a permitted use and the substantial economic injury for each of the, of the two variances that were requested, rear addition and front addition. And you need to make findings on the seven points for each of those proposed additions, and therefore, she hasn't left in place your seven findings, and you're not bound by, oh, I didn't think about it carefully last time, so I can't rethink it this time. There are plainly alternatives for the problem that the wiring is antiquated. That is, put in new wiring, and you don't need an addition to do it, and there isn't any evidence in need an addition to do it. So I think you're entitled to think afresh about those issues, and I think under the Superior Court remand, you're required to, and break down your thinking into rear side addition, front addition, thirty-eight-foot, thirty-eight-foot restriction, and getting a variance from that, and do it piece by piece on both, whether there's a loss of a use and substantial economic injury, and if there is, in each of those respects, whether the other seven criteria are met for each of those issues. I think that's what the justice has ordered the board to do, but I assume you'll defer to Attorney Associates' interpretation, and he's a smart lawyer too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to say anything at this point on that?
You know, I, I'll just read you, I'll just read you, and then I'll give you sort of my thoughts. The board's decision is vacated, and the case is remanded for further findings as to whether enforcing the setback requirements would create a practical difficulty, as that term is defined in Section VB six B of Respondent Town's zoning ordinance. The board sought for findings with regard to all proposed additions. VB six B is the definition of practical difficulty. So my reading is that she sent it back, the court sent it back specifically for, to find findings on the practical definition, because you did not do that the first time. So that's sort of what the whole sort of conclusion's about. So you do need to do that. I do read that findings with all proposed additions, meaning the application itself, so to the extent there are different findings, you, you clearly have discretion to do that if there are differences, but I think you also have the discretion to say, we're making these findings as they are, as they relate to both variances. I just think you should make it clear in the record what you're doing. So to the extent you're doing it for both, make that clear. If you feel like there are different findings for both, make that clear. But we need to address the fact that there, that there are, all, all proposed additions need to be addressed. Is, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody comfortable with that?
So in other, so, and to go further, one step further, I also, as I said in my letter, because I, I saw that the decision, this decision is only being sent back on VB six B, the definition, that you could re-adopt, and you would have to re-adopt your existing findings on the seven criteria, because they were vacated.
If we chose to look at one in particular for clarification, as one of the board members in retrospect looks back and says, as Mr. McCall pointed out, that there, they may have had a second thought on that, that would be okay at this juncture also or not?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the attorneys on that, but I don't, I don't see why you'd be prohibited from adding additional findings, but I don't think you have to. I don't think that's what the court asked you to do. Usually on a remand, there, and I don't know if you, anyone was here, six years ago, I want to say, was the last remand.
All right.
And so you've been through before, I think the chair's been through before, and they are very specific. If you remember that last one, it was for a very specific purpose, and the, the rest of the decision was not disturbed, even if it was vacated. So in this case, I, I saw it being sent back for this particular reason, was the definition of practical difficulty, and also in, in the footnote, to address the thirty-eight-foot limit.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public like to speak on this? Any other people?
I'm just going to, uh, respond to Attorney Associates' point, sort of thinking out loud here. But one of the issues that we raised on behalf of Mr. Fury on the appeal was that, to the extent the board's findings suggest the board thought he needed the addition to solve the egress upstairs, which the board's decision suggested, it was from looking at the record closely that I determined, well, you obviously don't, because all of the larger windows are going in walls that aren't otherwise being changed. So the board was just wrong about that, in my mind. And that was one of the issues we raised on the appeal with the justice, but she didn't reach that issue because she said preliminarily, there just weren't adequate findings on this preliminary issue. So I think Attorney Associate is right. You could just re-adopt your findings and, and say, well, we're not going to think about it carefully again, and then I'm going to go talk to her about the fact that those walls are big enough for the windows they want to put in. That's just a finding that people didn't think through. I don't mean, I don't mean to suggest you weren't careful, but you're busy people, and the, the opposition didn't, didn't put the plans in front of you and say, these windows are all going in existing walls. You don't need a variance for that. So I think that finding that you made, for example, was, was plainly mistaken because it hadn't been thought through carefully. I think it'd be a mistake, if I were your lawyer, to say, well, send it back and have McCall explain that to the judge again, and don't discuss it. But, but that's, I think he's right, you can do that, I just don't think it's wise. And you plainly can revisit any finding you made, because she did remand it and send it, and send it back to you, vacated your decision totally. So you're not limited in your discretion to revisit things that you've previously addressed, in my opinion, and I think Phil agrees with that. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's right. Anybody comfortable with that? Anybody else wish to speak, either, either side? And nobody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting and come to the board. Board members-
Board members would like to discuss, open up for discussion. If you want to ask anybody a question, feel free, and we'll go... Go ahead.
One thing that has been surfaced, I wasn't here for the hearing last year, so I wasn't part of that decision, but it was surfaced here, so I think it's fair to bring it up. The thirty-eight-foot setback has come up from both sides. I'd like to hear the town's opinion of... The ordinance was enacted, what, two years ago now? Something like that? And I was a member of the board at that time. I would like to hear the board's opinion on the thirty-eight-foot setback based on the intent of the ordinance, not what's written, but what was the intent when this was pulled together? Was it thirty-eight foot overall, or was it thirty-eight foot for the body of the building, then you add on a porch, then you add on an addition? Was it really meant to be thirty-eight feet overall?
The code is very specific in that the main box of the building, and of course, the code, quite frankly, I'm going to couch it this way, the code was really developed for new structures. It really did not address existing non-conforming structures. In fact, there really wasn't even a section in the code on non-conformance. We are proposing amendments now that will deal with that. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. But what we have done for other structures that were non-conforming is we took the position that if the component that you added, or the section of the building that you added, was compliant and in the compliant or conforming building window, as long as that was the case, and it met the code to the greatest practical extent, because quite frankly, there are some existing buildings that simply can't, because of the way they were structured or oriented on the lot, simply can't comply a hundred percent with the code. Should that preclude someone from adding to their house or improving their structure when they're paying large tax dollars down at Higgins Beach? No. So we have to use some sense of reasonableness. And if somebody wants to challenge that, so be it. So the way we look at this, the way I looked at this, quite frankly, was that if, should the board approve the front addition, and the appellant was asking for relief on that front setback, eighteen to twenty-one feet, because the house is already so far back, there was no condition in the code that said you have to pick the structure up and move it, although that's certainly a great option if you can do it. No requirement to do so. If you added that front addition, that seventeen-foot front addition, and you look at the components that are already there, if you look at the screen, I'll try to show you, this, the... On the left-hand side of this view that's on your screen, you see an existing porch on the rear. That whole porch, clear up to, and for the entire length of the thirty-one-foot, eight-inch dimension, is one story. That, even though partially is enclosed, it is all considered porch. It's an enclosed, engaged porch. Part of it's open, part of it's closed. Therefore, that back section, the existing section of the house, starts to behave like a rear addition. Yes, it does encroach into the thirty-foot setback. The whole house encroaches into the thirty-five-foot setback, but it behaves like a rear addition. If you were to permit that front addition to go on there, that becomes the actual dwelling, and it meets that thirty-eight-foot standard. The rear addition, then, is no longer than what would be allowed should the house be positioned and built new on the lot. I understand the butter's position on that. My position was, that behaved like a rear addition. The new part would behave like the real house, the main house, and the overall length was no longer than what we would permit if it was located on the lot. That's how I reviewed this and looked at it. I think at the last hearing, I might have explained it differently. I explained that if you flip that house around, put the existing house on the front, put the addition that he was asking on the back, then it would take a different form. It would look like a rear addition. We don't allow rear additions on the front of the house. But there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't add to the front of the house if you get relief on the front setback. And it is in the buildable window. That's how I looked at it. This little piece back here with the bathroom on it, don't really know what to call that because it's not really a sidewing. A sidewing is a multi-story addition on the side. It may be, it's not really a porch because it doesn't meet fenestration. You've got a bathroom and a laundry in there. It's just an existing, non-conforming piece of the structure. Can't make everything fit. But that's how I reviewed that. And to me, that made more sense than any way of looking at it. I don't disagree that that house exists in the rear setback, always has, and still will if this is approved or not. That's how I reviewed it.
Thank you. Other board members?
I mean, I'm very comfortable with the town's interpretation of the thirty-eight-foot. I mean, I think you were very clear back in September, and Brian made a very good explanation. He just did again about the thirty-eight-foot. I mean, my understanding, that wasn't even part of the original application, because the town said this isn't, he doesn't need it.
Other board members, comments, questions?
I got another question.
Fairly.
If I could have you stand up and address one question for me? Yes, please. Your house was razed at one point in time in the very recent past, I assume?
Yeah, it was like twenty-five years ago, maybe.
Okay. What was the intent for that raising of the building?
Because the, like a lot of the old houses, it was built on wooden posts and pilings. And the pilings, because it wasn't winterized, with frost heaves, would move every year and tumble over. The wooden support structures would rot. So we stabilized it. I mean, we got a building permit from the town for raising it, putting a foundation and putting it back down. But it was to stabilize it, because the, those posts on pilings, as you may know, when from frost heaves, the basement, it didn't have a basement, it was open, move every winter and very difficult to maintain. Finally, it got to the point where it was starting to crumble down.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Other comments, questions, thoughts from the board?
So, trying to put to the thought my reasons for justifying, and I still believe that it is reasonable to have the property not moved, although also allow for the reality that it's unlikely that something of that style, two-by-four construction, and obviously the noise that the next owner never actually acknowledged, is probably because there's no insulation, or very little insulation. And so you run into a whole bunch of problems with that property as a whole. I look at that, and if you tried to move that, my guess is it would certainly exceed the fifty percent cost of being able to move that. My guess is it would be thousands of dollars or more. So I don't think it makes sense to move that building. Furthermore, I don't think it's required to move the building, because the envelope, in fact, is open there, and I think that gives us some flexibility. It's also in the middle of a lot of change with the ordinance rules. So I think we have a lot of moving targets here. When I think of whether or not this is a, this is an economic injury, I don't know how that you could take that building as it currently sits and make it safe, and bring it up to code, and have the standard two-by-six construction, which is expected in northern New England. It's not in Massachusetts. It's two-by-four construction. It's not normal in Massachusetts. In Maine, it's two-by-six. And there's a reason. We're colder up here. So that structure in and of itself, to me, is flawed. I don't think that, I think we've earlier determined that the property had some serious structural defects. One of the reasons why, on the right-hand side, that I felt comfortable to be able to allow that two-foot bump out was because the applicant was removing about the same amount and bringing it more in compliance with the ordinance. Again, not necessarily solving the problem, because in the circumstances as I see it, it's not a solvable problem. But what I mean by that is bringing it into an envelope with any reasonableness. I don't think it's reasonable to expect to kind of knock it down and start over, which would certainly be an option. They'd still have to come back here. We'd certainly still have to approve it, and we probably would. But if you look at our history, we approve things where they sit. If somebody came in and said they wanted to approve, build something, we'd say, fine, as long as you stay in the envelope, you already are. We may prefer them to move it forward, but I seldom, I don't remember a situation where we've mandated that they bring it more in conformance. I think they've always done that when it made sense. And I believe that Mr. Wilson would have also proposed that if it made sense, he would move that property. Because obviously, his goal is to build a property that is structurally sound and functional. And I do believe that there are issues with that second floor and the functional excellence of that floor. So what I'm getting at, I guess, is I looked back in the history, I watched the video again before this meeting tonight, I've tried to rethink what my, what I thought about why this was, why it rose to the level of a hardship, a undue hardship, is if the character and the design and the appeal isn't a factor, then yes, you can do anything. But the reality is, it is a factor. And there is history there, and there is relationship there. And it is reasonable to expect the applicant to want to have that retained, especially when you're talking about something that's hundreds of years old and history of the family. I don't think that is an unreasonable request. I also don't think it's reasonable to raise it up. I think it is too fragile. So all of those things combined, when I think about whether or not there's an economic reason, I believe there is. He's also living there full-time. It's not a safe property to live in. It's not safe. And they could take the wiring and redo it, and they could do a lot of different things with it. But you've still got a two-by-four, hundred-and-so-morty-year-old home that is not going to meet today's standards by any means. With the ceiling height is an issue. Hey, I'm five-six on a proud day, so I guess I could get by with a five-foot-six ceiling. But that's, I'm probably one of the few. So I don't think it's reasonable to expect a five-foot-six ceiling. And I do argue that it would be dangerous. The two-foot stairwells are too narrow by any standard. And so I do think that's a reasonable assumption to have to deal with that. I know Mr. Warren, I respect his work, although I don't think it is reasonable to expect somebody to do a drive-by and have an opinion that would be tied to what has been done, again, by Mr. Wilson. So although I do tend to agree that there are, under normal circumstances, a reasonable assumption that you could lift that up and move it, I think there could be. However, at what point does the dollars and the risk outweigh the factors of common sense? And I just don't think this rises to that level. And again, it's not just, it's not just that we're talking about the practicalness of it, but also the reasonableness of it. Is it reasonable to us to expect them to do that as a board? And I don't think it is reasonable as a board to meet that standard, to make them do that. So in my opinion, and I'd like everybody to challenge me on this, I believe that standard is met easily. And the property as it sits doesn't make, it needs to have something done to it. And if you're going to do it, you need to do it right. I believe that they do have the right to use that envelope, although I don't think that's been totally defined. But I believe the envelope is open. They are in the building envelope. Numerous times we discussed, they could do, on other files, that they could do something with their, if they stayed in their building envelope, they can do what they want. I don't see that as necessarily part of this process, although it is encompassed in the whole mix, and that's why I think you have to take this holistically. The reality is that the new ordinance allows for a totally different set of circumstances than we had before. The building envelope hasn't changed. That's still allowed. It's an open building envelope. Now, all of a sudden, we're not even bringing it into compliance by bringing that property forward and putting the deck on. It's still out of compliance. He would have to bring it out another twenty feet or so to bring it into compliance with the new ordinance. And that's not reasonable either. So just as absurd as it is to build it up, try and move it, and take the damage and the risk and the cost, it's equally absurd for us to expect to move that forward to meet the new zoning regulation. I also think that Mr. Lynch is accurate with being able to flip. When you look at it from the point of view of, you're taking this new structure, you've got all the components of the main house being built in the new section. You've got the kitchen in there. You've got the heavy-duty parts of the house, and the stairway, whether or not it could be in a different location or not, it isn't in this proposal. So it is, the core of the building is there. It's in that new structure. So I think it is reasonable, if one chose, to use the argument that now that becomes the back and this becomes the front. I don't choose that. I would look at it differently, but I think that's a reasonable assumption, and I think any board member could take that position. I think there are multiple ways that board members individually can look at this case. So when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the side setback, number one. Is that reasonable and consistent with what we'd expect? Well, they're making it more in conformance. That's what we always use as a gauge. Are we rewarding a behavior? Yes, because the other side, we're allowing that two feet to come out to give them more height there, but ultimately, it puts us more in conformance. And so consequently, I have no problem inside of that overall box to let them have more room there, because they're actually working with us to solve or improve a certain situation. So I believe that the side setbacks are met, and the logic is sound to allow that to take place, and I think it does make sense. I do agree with the window issue. I think that's very accurate. Mr. McCall's dead on on that. But I don't think that's the issue at hand. I don't think we ever even talked about the window issue. It really wasn't part of my decision in the process. My decision was, what's the right thing to do based on the realities of this property? When I look at, I'm going to wrap it up here shortly, but when I look at, again, the front of the property, the new ordinance almost requires that you use the, they want to see, the town wants to see decks and porches on the front. It really, it rewards that behavior with the new ordinance, whether or not that's the intent or not, I don't know, but it certainly does reward that behavior. Because it says you can use other rules if you do this, if you meet our design standards. And the town is not, the design standards are not new to this town. The town has got one on Route One, and they've applied that very thoroughly, and it's a reward process, in my opinion, watching what's been done. And my building is an example of that. So I don't, I don't see that as being an issue at all. I don't see the thirty-eight feet as being an issue, because again, they've got a building envelope, but they've got a right to build it. And if you go with Brian's logic, which I think is sound, you could flip it. I think that realistically, they've got a right to do that anyways. And again, it's consistent with it. And they don't even need, when I looked at this, I said, they're actually coming here to get an exception for the fact that they can't get all the way to the front where they should be. So those are, when I try to piece it all together, and it's not a neat box, I don't have a neat answer for it. I don't have, it's not nice and defined. But when you look at the things that have gone on, you've got a hundred-and-so-morty-year-old building, you've got a property that's not, but he's right, it's right up against the line. I don't like that. I wouldn't like that if I were them. But it's there. So that's a fact. It's there. So the question is, is it impeding more on the back neighbor? I do not believe it is impeding more on the back neighbor. I believe that if you do those repairs, it'll actually make it more soundproof, because you'll be using current structures as opposed to... So I actually think, although the applicant, the neighbor would certainly prefer to have that property moved away from the line, it's not. And that's not the request, and it's not required to be the request. And so the only benefit I see is positive for the back neighbor, because it should end up reducing the sound and pushing the main activities of the home to the front of the home, as opposed to the side or the back. So that's kind of my overview of why I believe we've made the right decision back in September, and why I believe it's the right decision today. And I'll let the board talk some more.
And I think, if I can add to the chair's comments, I think the three things that we're here to decide tonight, based on Mr. Sossier's direction to us as being part of the town, is that we are here for those three questions. The definition or approaching the definition of practical difficulty, and how we applied it to this case back in September. The applicant's thirty-eight-foot depth, and how we believe the ordinance allows that or does not allow that. That was the second question. And then the third one was the findings. I don't think we're here to rehash the findings of what was decided last time. I just believe we're here to state the reason, and I think you started doing that, for the decisions that were made during the last case.
The side also, I think, is an issue. I think we, because of the slight movement on the side, so I think that's a separate issue, too.
Okay. That wasn't brought up at the beginning. I didn't hear that, so I'm fine with that. And I'm not saying you shouldn't have said that. But what I'm saying is, I think your points have been around item three. So can we go through the other two items to start getting definition on those, so that we can start pulling our findings and facts together?
And I really need the board to participate on this process, so we can get it on the record. So the first question is, what do you believe is the justification for allowing a practical difficulty, based on what you know and what you've studied? And four of us have voted on this before. What was your reasons before that you decided that? We didn't publicly state it the way it should have been done, and that was my error. So, but to be candid with you, I thought it was pretty clear. So when I did it, I didn't really think of it as a separate line item. So, when I did it, I didn't really think of it as a separate line item, because I thought it was extremely clear that this is a property that needed help, and I think we stated that over, we didn't separately address it. The judge is absolutely correct, and she had the right and the responsibility to do what she did, and I have no problem with that.
So, can we start by reading the definition of the practical difficulty first?
If you'd like to, feel free.
Do you know where it is? Because I don't want to get it wrong.
It is, uh, it's a case where, I can read it. A case where the strict application of dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property, for which a variance is sought, would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant. So, it's, it's two components, almost three components in it, so let's take it in pieces. A case with a strict application of dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which the variance is sought, would preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone. Well, you basically, it's a single-family home, you could have an office in there, I believe that's the two things that attorneys both mentioned, that it's limited to basically those two uses in that zone, I don't think there's anything else. Mr. Sossier, would you agree with that? Mr. Sossier?
One of the things that, that you're being asked to debate is, does it preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone? You've heard two different arguments about how that would be interpreted. One is, and we really, I, I agree with Attorney Katsavikas, we really don't have a lot of guidance from the court on this. Quite frankly, we have one Superior Court case, we don't have a main Supreme Court case on this. So, we're kind of acting in that, in that, without guidance from the court. So, it's, the applicant has argued that it precludes a use that, of the property which is permitted, such as a home office, rental property, other types of uses that they normally could do without a variance. The abutter is arguing the opposite, which is that they could, they can have a single-family house here with or without a variance, that's a permitted use. I don't know the answer to that, we don't know the answer to that, because the courts haven't answered that for us. But that's something that you're asked to debate tonight.
Okay.
Um, the only, the only guidance we have is from that Superior Court case, and, and that case suggested that there, in, in my view, more of the latter, more of what Attorney Katsavikas suggested, which was, and this is what actually we argued in, in the brief, but we're back before you, which is that it's a use that you could normally do, it was normally permitted in the zone without, without the variance, except for some of the uses that were being defined tonight. But there, but that is one interpretation, there's multiple interpretations of that. The important thing is what you guys decide tonight, based on what you've heard.
Thank you. So, why don't we start with, so now that, Ms. Shu?
Well, you talk about permitted uses, and I think, you know, Higgins Beach is very, I mean, it's a very big place for rentals and stuff, and so I think it's got a very solid argument, and I mean, I think the abutter, who is here opposing, is enjoying the same things of being able to rent his property, where, I mean, that is, you know, at some point, a loss of income almost, where you cannot recoup that in the summer, where a lot of residents in Scarborough are participating in that, especially in the beach town, its neighborhood.
So, your position on that is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but your, your logic there as far as leading this requirement of, of practical difficulty is what?
Yes, I felt he had enough requirements.
Based on the fact that he couldn't rent it?
That's just one of the, I mean, to me, that's one of the biggest reasons.
Do you have others that you want on the record?
Um, so.
Okay.
The way I look at it is, a practical difficulty is, he has a structure, he wants to make changes to it, and the structure doesn't coincide with the current zoning regulations. And the improvements that he wants to make, improves the building, improves the neighborhood, it improves everything. One of the things that Mr. Shury pointed out, when Brian Marley, the only thing that he was complaining about was noise. If you take a look at the design of the, the new house, the dining room in the old house was in the back. Yeah, I can understand, with no insulation and everything like that, there could be a lot of noise. But I'll, I'll tell you one thing, nine weeks down at Higgins Beach in the summertime, it's noisy all over. It is terrible at times. There's no way that you can prevent noise going from one cottage to another, when they're so close together. But I think they've done a nice job here, redesigned, they put the study in the back, moved the dining room forward and the living room forward. I think that's gonna reduce any noise going back, plus, you're gonna have insulation and so forth. I think he, he fully meets the practical difficulty.
What is the, the, just for clarification for my sake, what is the, what is your position regarding the economic injury, and why that he can't do something as it sits, if you wanted to just do something as the property sits, as Mr. McColl has pointed out? Why is that not, why is that not reasonable?
To do something exactly the way it sits?
Yeah.
Well, it's got a piece of history inside that, that house. And I know an awful lot of people on the beach would hate to see that history go, just because somebody says, "Hey, uh, you know, you're gonna use stairway in, the only place you can put it in is in the middle, and your wagon has gotta go." That's not, that's not the right thing to do. As far as an economic hardship, moving it is an economic hardship. I think what he's trying to do is, he's trying to do the cheapest thing that he could possibly do, improve the property the best that he could possibly do. And I think he's doing it. I don't know how else to answer it.
I appreciate it.
Sure. My thoughts on this, in regard to the permitted use, you know, he's saying that due to insurance limitations, whether insurance, liability insurance, whether it's available or, or, or not, obviously, using it as a home office, using it as a rental use, as Ms. Shu said, there's a lot, there's a financial, economic injury here because of the loss of potential income. Whether or not insurance may be made available, but that could also be, in my view, is that is also an economic injury, because the insurance for that would be so high, because of the narrow staircase for meeting ADA regulations and code, you know, potential for falls and injury, and then lawsuits and everything else, that leads to economic injury. My other thought, my other thought is that, again, as mentioned, the improvements, move the building more in conformance, and then additionally, not to repeat anything else that anyone else has said, but I'll point out that, based on the land survey done by Licensed Land Survey in 2016, the building and everything, though it is close to the line, it doesn't show that it is encroaching past the property line into the adjacent lots.
We did require the removal of the tanks, didn't we? I think we required that to be moved. I don't recall.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Sure. What about you, Mr. Wilson?
Well, in some ways, I'm struggling a bit with this, because, again, the way this is written, is both sides of this question have to be met. So, the applicant has to find that they are being, take, their, their right is being taken away from being able to use the property in the way they want to, and they have to have an economic injury at the same time. It's not one or the other. So, if we don't, if we don't allow this appeal to go through, I'm having a hard time with the economic side. Because if you don't let it go through, the property's gonna sit as it is. You have to look at a different way of doing it, possibly trying to come back for another appeal. And to me, is that economic injury enough to say that that would be met, if we didn't approve this? And I'm struggling with that a bit.
Just as we usually do, banter.
Please.
To me, the, the question would come down to being, what, it's reasonable to expect them to be able to improve the property, make it safe, have it usable year-round? That, that is my personal opinion, that would be consistent with everything else.
Yes.
It's unreasonable as it sits to be able to do that. Would we agree with that?
Yes.
So, then it comes down to being...
And I think that becomes to precluding, right? Whether they can use it in the, in the fashion it's supposed to be zoned for.
Exactly.
And I agree with that. So, I'm struggling with that.
So, to me, the challenge comes back to, what's it going to cost to do that? And then, at what point, and I think, Mr. Longstaff can answer this question, what is the trigger that you have to go to meet all current zoning? What, is there a trigger point? Nothing. So, they could do three-quarters of it, and nothing, nothing's gonna trigger it, just other than getting approved for town.
Okay. So, if the building were to be moved into the envelope, not that it fits the envelope, but if they were, it were to be moved close to the envelope, do you have a feel for what that cost might be? Was that part of the decision-making process? Swag? And could you step up to the podium and answer that? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You may not be prepared to answer that.
I'm not prepared with actual figures I've done.
Okay.
But if you just look at moving the house, taking out the foundation, filling in the hole, taking all the utilities and redirect all the underground utilities, putting in a new foundation, all the landscaping around the property will be destroyed, it has to be all done over, you're looking at easily in excess of fifty, and maybe approaching eighty to ninety thousand dollars more.
And I would agree with that number.
Okay.
And you've been in the industry for a while, so...
Fifty-two years.
You do have some level of expertise.
Yes.
You've earned that gray hair.
Yes. And if I may, can I say one thing?
Please.
It may be not in line, but I want to say this, I believe you're interpreting the practical difficulty wrong, where it says it will preclude a use of the property that permitted in the zone.
Yep.
Use is a funny term in zoning. Use preoccurs to residential, business, industrial, commercial. That's not what the practical difficulty is about. It's a use of the property which is permitted in the zone. Putting an addition onto a residence which is a use in the zone is how you use that property. And putting addition onto a building is permitted as a use of that property.
Right, but you are coming for an appeal...
Yes.
...to get that use. Because anybody can do it if it falls in the envelope.
Yes, we are. But we aren't coming for an appeal to change the zoning use from commercial to residential.
Correct, correct.
Here's what's interesting about that dialogue right there. When I look at that appeal, and I originally read it, part of, the, 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 the tension of the needs, one of the reasons they had to come to the appeal is because they don't, even though they've got an envelope, they don't meet the new requirements. New requirements were required to build it dramatically deeper into the property.
Certainly.
So, you've got two competing issues there, you've got the, the old code, you've got the, the right to be able to build in your own envelope, but you can't, because you're not meeting the new regulations, which means you have to come for variance to be able to meet that, or practical difficulty. And so, I see, the challenge for the applicant is, how do they meet all of those competing needs? And I think that, at some point, it's not reasonable to, from a cost point of view.
And that's where I'm going. My argument wasn't around the first part of that question, it's the second part, the economic hardship. So, if you could please step back up, sorry. You move the structure for, say, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
You've still got an old building...
Exactly.
...with the same conditions that were there.
Right.
So, now you've gotta put money into the building, and you're putting some value into that property to get it so that it's livable, so you get a staircase that's within code.
Exactly.
Now, once you've done that, how much of the existing property value has increased as a result of that? Say if you put another hundred thousand into it, to still have an old building, but you just have a good staircase, and you haven't really improved it that much, you put two-hundred into it, what's the current value, and what's the percentage of the property's value that you've affected?
Well, I'm not a real estate broker and appraiser, but I can tell you, one of the things they look at is the amount of square footage, depends on the value, as well as the condition of the building. If you end up with the same size square footage you started with, you haven't increased that square footage, so the only place you go to gain any value in the value of the property is based on what the appearance and what you've put into that existing structure is. So, just improving the inside of the house, and keeping the same square footage, and maybe losing one of the rooms on the first floor, or a good portion of that room, to get in a compliant stairway, and also the same thing happening upstairs by getting a compliant stairway up on the second floor, which has a hallway from bedroom to bedroom that's only two feet wide right now, you're gonna be taking more space out of that second floor, and probably end up losing at least one bedroom on the second floor. So, you're gonna end up with a loss of rooms on the same square footage, that will decrease the value of the existing house.
Okay.
Even though you update it and approve it.
Right, and I, I guess my line of questioning is trying to lead you to answer the question that you put twenty or thirty percent into the property and haven't gained any more value.
Exactly, that's what would happen.
Okay. That, to me, would be an economic hardship.
Thank you.
Because you haven't gained anything, and you've put that much money into the property, you've moved it away from the property line, but have you really gained anything?
Bigger bill.
And the answer, I think, is no.
Yep.
You've got a stairwell that you can go up now, but the property value really hasn't increased, you've put a little bit more space between you and the abutter, there's still a potential for noise, because you've only probably added twenty feet space between the two...
And the kitchen's in the same place.
And you still have an open building that has a bunch of noise coming out of it. So, to me, that would be an economic hardship, and now you would meet the second portion of that question, and I'm okay. But I didn't want to give you the answer.
Okay.
You failed my test.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Lynch. Dealing in the insurance aspect of it, as I do, when were, like approximately, the roof, furnace, plumbing, heating, when were they updated last? Are they all really old?
Yeah, okay, so the roof, I think, don't hold me to it, I think it's probably thirty years old.
Okay.
And one of the things we plan to do is, without changing where the roof is, put a new roof on it, the shingles. What was the other thing? The furnace? Well, it never had a furnace, it, it still doesn't have a furnace. I moved in a couple of years ago, I put a Renai propane heater, which is barely adequate. Actually, it's pretty, pretty cold in the winter, and, because I didn't want to do a big furnace for a couple of years, because I was planning to do a substantial remodeling, so I've been kind of limping along with a little Renai, but I don't know if that's considered a furnace or not, but that's...
Heating, yeah, that's fine.
And what else?
Um, your electrical, is it fuses?
Electrical.
Is it knob and tube? Is it...
It's that...
Hundred amp, two-hundred amp?
Raltin knows what it's called, it's, it's metal spiral wire, what's it called?
That's the cable.
That's...
Whatever cable that the wire is in.
Yeah, but you had a word for it last time. It's, it's, uh...
Spelden?
Knob and tube.
Knob and tube, okay.
Yeah, I think...
All right. And it's, it's being used right now, the knob and tube, okay?
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing was plumbing?
Um, let's see, well, the plumbing...
Just roughly, it doesn't have to be...
Yeah. Oh, I know, when we raised it, which I think was twenty or thirty years ago, we replaced some of the copper pipe with PVC underneath. I think that was the most recent update of the plumbing.
Last question, I know we talked about rental, but you said this is now your primary residence, you don't have the intent of renting it now, right? When you're doing this? Because you said this is now your primary residence.
I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't like to remain, have that option precluded, but I actually don't plan to rent it, I'm very happy living there, and it is my sole and only residence, I don't have any other houses anywhere. So, no, I don't plan to rent it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of things that you just addressed. One of the things from an insurance aspect, you cannot have knob and tube wiring in your house. It has to be replaced. It's not something you can get an insurance policy on. Knob and tube will not be written. Most places looking for a furnace, they're not looking for a regular Renai portable heater, they're looking for some type of stable heat source that's in... They're looking for some type of stable heat source that's in there. Roofing with generally all the carriers, you can go to surplus lines. You can still get coverage if you have a roof that's over thirty years, but just about all the carriers are looking for twenty-five years for a newer roof. He's thirty years old, so he's got a roof that doesn't make it. He's got knob and tube wiring in there that doesn't make it. Plumbing's probably okay, but the heat source is a little bit iffy. I mean, like you said, you can possibly get something through a surplus lines-type carrier for thousands of dollars more than a regular homeowner's policy would cost you. So I do see that as an economic impact. If you were to rent it, you'd have to have two separate means of regress on the outside. That's what they look for when they look at that. So you've got to have a stairwell going outside and a stairwell in the front of the house or whatever. If having it in the middle of the house, they're not going to look for that. They're going to look for two means of regress from the top floor and the bottom floor. I ran into that with a policy I was doing for someone in Portland. They had to have two means of regress. Couldn't find a carrier unless it was surplus lines for them.
Even if the windows are appropriate size?
Yeah, because you've got a certain distance up. It depends upon how high the windows are. You've got to be able to hang from the window and drop without breaking body parts. So I mean, if the windows are twenty feet up, it's not really a safe means of regress. It's a smaller window, even if you've got a newer window in there. So I mean, those are just some of the things that I see. I see it does meet. That would be an economic impact. I mean, renting it, as you said, you're not going to, or you don't want to preclude it, but there are other things that go along with the rental of a unit and other things that you'd have to have upgraded. And it's kind of, like you said, it's kind of iffy uses. We really can't determine that. I mean, he's saying he wants to use it as home office. That's permitted in the use. He says he wants to use it for his dining room and living room. That's permitted in the use. They're saying you can use it as a primary home. Yeah, that's permitted in the use too. Which one is it? Does he get to use his office and still keep his dining room and still keep his living room without taking those out and keep his bedrooms upstairs? So he only has one bedroom to sleep with? If the halls need to be wider for the stairwells? I don't know. I think there's an argument to be made that that is permitting a use.
So your argument regarding the Practical Difficulty, the economic injury, are you saying that based on all that information?
Yeah, I mean, you can get insurance policies for anything. But it's going to cost you quite a lot of money, and you're going to have to redo some stuff. I mean, once they find out knob and tube is working in there, no insurance carrier really wants to touch that. It's a total fire hazard. It's one of the first questions people ask when they go out and do it. Is there any live knob and tube? And inspectors will go and look, and they'll take pictures. And if they see live knob and tubes, they'll write back to the insurance company and say, "This is live knob and tube," because they can tell. They have little tests that they put up there. And it tested, it shows it's live.
But I get, coming back to-
Yeah, economic injury.
But coming back to the butter's issues or comments, they could do that with the property not moving. They could do that now. So you're right about that being an economic challenge, but they don't have to do the expansion based on-
Well, I would think one of the expansions would be that, second means of regress.
Second, that's a legitimate point. And also, I would say, losing a bedroom or losing another space is a legitimate point. That would make sense.
Yeah, I mean, they could do it, but they're going to lose some stuff out of this.
So your position, again, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth here, so I'm trying to let you speak the way you guys choose. This is not about me, it's about the right answer. So what, tied to the fact that they've got to look at this property and say, and the court's going to look at this, and the applicant and his attorney's going to look at this, as they should, and we've got to make sense. If we believe in what we believe, or we need to override what we believe and go with it, whatever the right answer is, needs to be the right answer. It's not about being right or wrong, it's the right answer.
Well, like you said, we've been consistent with what we do. If it's within the envelope and they're trying to make it more within the envelope, we generally allow people to do that. That's kind of consistency that we've always done.
You're right.
As long as people are coming within that envelope and are trying to get within that envelope, we've allowed them to do some of these things. And I don't think just doing it, I don't know. From a building perspective, I mean, Mr. Wilson told us there may be different things. We've got someone that did a drive-by on it. They didn't go out and look at the building. I don't know. I mean, they could put bigger windows in there, and they may mess up the structure. I mean, what'd you say? One piece is like a wagon in there or something like that? What's to say they do this, and they keep it where it is, and don't do the renovations and things, and the wagon falls down? The whole house caves in on where it is? I mean, you could unsturdy the structure if you're doing some of these things. I don't know. I'm not a builder.
Other comments on, Mr. Longstaff, anything?
I think I've been taking notes, but at this point, I think you should take a motion on, this is the first one, let's say, the Practical Difficulty. And the person who makes the motion states, summarizes the reasons that they've heard, whether it's that it doesn't meet or that it does meet. Summarizes the reasons, you can deliberate and then vote on that.
Okay.
I'd also recommend, consistent with what we've said before, if you make a motion that it does meet, that you make a motion to say whether it's for both additions or one of the additions. So clarify, in other words, your case, because that was one of the things the court asked.
Would it be three or just two? The side, the deck, the porch and the addition? Or would it just be the addition and the side?
I think you really could break it into the front addition and then the side addition that's in the rear setback.
Those are really the two asks.
I guess sort of, to take a step back, I guess, the thirty-eight-foot length issue, if you decide it fits within the ordinance as is, in other words, they're allowed to build the length that they want to build based on the ordinance, then that would not be considered a variance, and it would be just those two, the front and the side. If you decide the opposite about thirty-eight foot, then there'd be quote, "three additions" that you'd be talking about.
Let's talk about the thirty-eight.
Yeah, why don't you do that first? Because that would affect your finding on the variance.
Mr. Longstaff, I'm pretty clear with that, though.
Yeah, number one, I do think Mr. Longstaff is very clear on it. But however, you could very easily argue that Mr. Longstaff interpreted improperly. So I'm not, I don't, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing the right way. I look at the thirty-eight, and they're actually allowed, and you do the math, at sixty-two feet. I think one of the attorneys made a comment about that. You can actually get out sixty-two feet. I think you're talking semantics when you start talking about whether or not the back is, you can only build out on the back, but you can't build out on the front. You've got a building envelope that's open on the front, that's allowed to be built on. So if he's just building that addition in that envelope and the new code, and the new requirements weren't in place, if he were looking at the old ordinance, he could look and build in that envelope. And he wouldn't have to come to us, as far as I see it. Does anybody disagree with that, Mr. Longstaff?
I totally agree with that, Mr. Longstaff.
So the trigger that's actually forcing the hand isn't the fact that he wants to build an addition on and make it that section. The trigger is the fact that when he does that, he's not in compliance with the new ordinance. So you've got, and then you've also got the new ordinance.
In which way are you referring that he's not in compliance with the new ordinance? I think you need to make that clear.
I think that's a good point, thank you. Well, the new ordinance requires that the property is pushed toward the road, toward the street. That's not about, and I don't believe it's about, and I know the butter made a comment about it. I don't believe it's got anything to do with giving people more privacy in the backyard. The, we've seen enough of the way the town does its planning, and it likes great American neighborhood-style personalities, for lack of a better term, where the streets are walkable, friendly, inviting. Everything about the new ordinance is designed to make it appealing to be in a neighborhood, a warm sense of home. It's almost a Norman Markwell kind of a concept, is how I interpret it. And I think it's, I don't think it has anything to do with how big the lot, how big the unit is. Again, I think you have to look at, the unit's there, it's already there. It is what it is, it's there and it's sitting there. If you come back to the current regulations, the new ordinance, they cannot build that small a unit on that front without coming to us because it doesn't meet the new setbacks. So what is it, the, I don't want to make up numbers, but how many feet from the road and how many feet that is?
Eighteen to twenty-one feet is what it's-
Eighteen to twenty-one feet. They don't get there. They don't get there. So they don't meet the current ordinance. They have to come here, just to be able to get, to add on. Whereas, again, if the ordinance wasn't there, they could do it without even batting an eye. And the side is a consistent change that we've done over and over again, as you pointed out with them. We've said, "Look, are they more, is it bringing it more in compliance?" The answer is yes. Is that new piece coming out going into deeper than what it would normally be? No, it's not. And it's coming to the side with the applicant, actually, an extra neighbor's side with it. But it's allowing for more practical use of the property, a safer use of the property. It is, you're taking the kitchen and you're moving it to the front. That is going to drive the trap, and nobody's different. So when I look at all this piece, and I get scattered on this a little bit, so I apologize because I'm moving parts, but I think it comes back to there is no other alternative for them to have come to the board for an appeal. And it's a bizarre reason that they're coming to the board, as opposed to what you'd think they'd be coming to. They're coming to the board because it can't, the development, the expansion they want to do can't meet or doesn't meet the new ordinance. Which is a twist on this thing. You've still got the side, it's a different issue. But the front part is one of the same. And then the deck, or the front porch is allowed. That's obviously allowed per the ordinance. Again, that's not even an issue. It's celebrated. So they want you to bring that closer. And the whole unit is how many feet long?
Fifty-four, is that what it is?
Fifty-four, I think.
Which is eight feet short of the- Forty-seven feet totally. And realistically, you could get the sixty-two feet. So the thirty-eight number is somewhat arbitrary in this case. I think it comes back to being, if that were new construction, that would apply. Old construction, I think it's arbitrary. I don't think it applies to the situation at all. And I think it, much like we had a previous appeal where we looked at it and said, "The new ordinance doesn't fit that odd circumstance." And we overrode the new ordinance because of that. It was the same kind of thing. That the ordinance didn't anticipate this twist. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Mr. Longstaff, what was it you were saying that was more catered to the new construction as opposed to the old construction? I know you made a comment about that in the new ordinance. It was more, something was more catered to new construction as opposed to an existing older structure, or maybe not?
Are you referring to my statement that the existing structure, if you added the proposed new structure on the front, the existing structure then behaves like a rear addition?
Yeah, I believe so.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
And I think you also had made a statement that when the ordinance was written, it was really written about building new properties and creating that character that you were looking for, and we're kind of applying that to modifications to existing structures.
Just two things for clarification, to help fill in, as we're noting this stuff. I think, I heard you say that one of the reasons why the side, one of the reasons you're stating you feel the side, the two-foot side addition in the rear setback is justified is that they're removing the two-foot section from that rear part of the building, that little side wing.
Correct.
That's about twelve foot six long, and they're basically replacing that into that section in between the side wing and the new structure. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
And it's still not bringing it up to its maximum use. They're just bringing it out a little bit. They're not bringing it even to the whole side there.
And something else that somebody, nobody seems to have addressed, and I just want to point it out, it's neither, it's just a statement of fact, is that trying to relocate the existing building forward, if you look at the buildable envelope, you only have a very short window of opportunity there before it narrows down to about nineteen feet, and the existing structure is over twenty-three feet wide. So even if they moved it forward within about twenty feet, maybe less, they'd have to come back to the board for variance on the side setbacks because they would then be encroaching on the side. And also, moving forward, if you look at the two structures next door, you can see on each, on the left and the right, in this view on your screen, there are two structures right there. There are no structures to the side of it over here, and you've got a little more open space. But that, I'm just trying to, as a statement of fact, I think that's one of the reasons why they're proposing to do what they're doing because relocating the structure really doesn't buy them anything. Unfortunately, because of the configuration of the lot. Just a statement of fact.
Thank you.
But it'd still be in the same predicament they're in now by moving it forward and just have to come back for it. And that's fine, and they can do that. I'm not saying they couldn't do that. They could certainly come back and ask for a variance for that, but-
I'll take a shot at the definition of Practical Difficulty and help me add on, as you say. I believe that, I'll take, I move that we approve or accept the definition, the Practical Difficulty has been met, and the cause, just to, that the use of the property and the economic injury is substantial enough to justify hitting that trigger, not only globally, but also on each of the individual items, all seven of the items that we've done. Because obviously, that's how I believed when we first approved it. And I believe the board believed that too. I'd like that on record, but I believe the board, before they voted, when we did that, already established the fact that those seven items needed to be triggered. They were triggered by the need for moving this in the way it is. So issues are, go ahead.
Let's finish the thirty-eight-foot thing. Did we do that?
Yeah, I don't think we did.
Take a vote on, or take a motion on that. I've heard discussion, and I've got facts that we'll bring back.
To the thirty-eight first?
The proposed findings of fact. But why don't you take a motion and vote on whether or not the building can only be thirty-eight feet under the ordinance or that it can be longer based on the reasons you guys have been discussing?
I believe that the applicant is allowed to do it, and the thirty-eight-foot can be breached and go even longer is based on the information that we heard from the town in saying the basis of the ordinance was to allow that thirty-eight feet on the major portion of the building. And then when you add the porch or any additions off the other end of the building, that it could go all the way up to sixty-two feet. So I think that clearly says that the thirty-eight-foot depth was allowed.
You're making a motion on that? Let's, anybody else have any comments? Because I don't think we've commented on the thirty-eight.
Well, I have.
You have.
Yeah.
You guys, unless you have?
No, my comments mimic Loizales in this. I have nothing really to add. I agree with the town's interpretation.
I think Ms. Shoup, you answered it, I believe. Feel free to say it again.
No, I think I expressed before that I agree with the town's interpretation. I think it's important to be consistent because, you know, there have been appeals before, or there haven't been appeals before where other people who have come before didn't need to come before the zoning board for this depth issue.
Yeah, I agree with the town's interpretation.
So, Mr. Longstaff, anyone to take a shot of it?
Make a motion to agree with the original decision around the applicant being allowed to build to a depth of thirty-eight feet, and that the existing ordinance supports that, and the board has made the decision to support that as well.
I don't think the number is right there.
It isn't, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think that the depth of the building is going to be-
Fifty-four?
Well, no, it's forty-eight and change.
Okay.
I think we've stated that in the original findings. It was forty-eight-six. The principal dwelling would then be forty-eight-six. And we're agreeing, what I'm hearing is that the board is agreeing the board is agreeing that forty-eight-six is not just the principal building, but the way that it connects to the existing building, making it a rear addition.
Is that right?
That was my interpretation, and everybody's saying you agree with that.
That's...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's dead right.
Okay.
Thank you. Does everybody agree with that?
If you want to vote on that.
Well, needs to be put in the formal motion, just trying to...
Do you want me to try to restate it for you, please?
Yeah, please, thank you.
The motion is that the applicant can build forty-eight point six feet under the code and is not limited to thirty-eight feet.
Okay, thank you.
The thirty-eight foot depth. Just make it straightforward and simple.
All right, good.
And then you, obviously, we have your reasons, which I've been drafting, based on what you're saying, but...
I'll move that motion, as you stated.
Second?
Second. Discussion on that motion.
I think we've got to be careful about saying forty-eight feet. I don't see where you're seeing forty-eight feet.
That's forty-eight-six, was it, as currently designed?
If you add the dimensions, go to the floor plan page, Brian. Thank you. If you add the dimensions stated on the drawing...
Forty-six and a half.
You have thirty-one foot eight, you have fifteen-six, one foot four.
But that doesn't include the porch.
We don't have to include the porch, because the porch is allowed to exist on the front of the building and encroach anyway, so it's immaterial.
Okay. So that's forty-six-six, if my math is correct.
Do it again.
Okay, thirty-one-eight.
Well, there's a little push out of...
I added that one foot four.
Yeah, including that push out is forty-eight point six.
Okay.
With that push out.
Okay. Wrong again.
Okay, so...
I have that motion down.
All right, great. So, and for the discussion on the motion? On the favor? That's unanimous. Good, thank you. So let me come back to the...
Seven questions.
So let's answer the practical difficulty.
So just to clarify, what we'll do is, usually in some of these cases, we'll bring back the find, we'll bring back draft findings based on your discussion.
So based on the information...
Based on the information and based on your discussion, that's the findings you'd like, that you've been discussing. I'll bring that back. Brian will draft her out, help and draft it. You'll review that to make sure that it's clear at your next meeting, and then you'll adopt it. Okay?
That sounds fine.
That'll be signed at that time.
They'll be signed, right.
Okay. So based on the comments from the council?
Just to make sure that there's no disagreement about what the findings were. We'll put down what we've heard tonight, and you can review them and agree to them. Or not, for that matter.
We're not done yet.
So that was the first motion. The second, you'll have to now make a motion on the practical difficulty definition.
So based on council's suggestion of the practical difficulty, being all of the items that we've encompassed and then putting it together for us and bringing it back for a final sign-off, that I'd move that we accept the fact that, as previously, our previous position, this property meets the standard of, actually exceeds the standard of practical difficulty requirement.
And let me clarify, just because we were asked specifically by the court, and that's for both additions, the front and the side.
The entire property, both additions, yes.
Based on the discussion you've had tonight?
Based on all the findings, that we, all the findings are fact and the discussion we've had.
Do you need that motion more defined?
Nope.
Second?
My second.
Discussion on that motion. If you have all the favor, that's all unanimous. Thank you. And we need to reaffirm the one through seven. However, I do think something does need to be clarified. I think, again, Mr. Crockett, a good question. When they raised the property up and posted it, did that trigger an incident or a issue that was caused by the penalty?
In what way?
I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just saying that he brought it up, and he's a fair question. He brought up the question of, you know, he didn't mention it, he didn't mention it that way, but I think you have to look at it that way. Did that activity trigger the problem that we are now trying to fix? Mr. Longstaff?
You mean raising the house and putting up foundation?
I mean, I don't think we've seen any evidence.
I don't believe it has either. I think you have to honestly talk about it.
Yeah, I just have a question from Mr. Longstaff. They wouldn't have had to come before us to raise it, right? Or would they have, or they just got a building permit from you?
If their installation of a new foundation did not raise the height of the building by more than a foot, we do allow a foot of difference only in the cases where somebody had to reframe it using larger framing. It could, you know, they're not adding space inside, they're just bringing it up. If they were to elevate it and add four feet, that would have been an expansion vertically of a non-conforming building. If they were, raise it one foot, one inch, that would have required a variance. I'm assuming, and I have not examined that particular issue, I'm assuming that it, they were issued a permit by the town in order to do that foundation. I'm assuming that they, as he said, elevated the structure, installed the new foundation, dropped the structure back down on it, and there was no elevation of the non-conforming part of the structure. So there was no require, you can do that without a variance. You can do that with a building permit. In the shoreland zone, you would have to prove that you've moved the building to the greatest practical extent from the resource. They're not in the shoreland zone. There's no requirement for them to do anything with that building.
Any, I don't know, Mr. Longstaff, you want to take the podium again? Are you in, I mean, that Mr. Longstaff said you didn't move it up more than a foot?
Well, I know the physical condition is we didn't add hardly any additional height. The basement is, so-called basement is unusable. You can't stand up in it. I believe, I'm ninety percent certain, we did it meeting that one foot max, because I remember we put a mark on a tree, and the enforcement officer came over and was making sure we didn't. So I'm ninety percent sure that's how it happened.
Did you disconnect the utilities when you made that move?
I don't know.
Okay. My thought being, if they disconnected the utilities, they could have raised or lowered, but if they kept the utilities connected, that might be proof that they didn't move elevation significantly.
I just don't remember that, but it's not, it didn't add usable space. It just gave us a sound footing.
Okay.
And I think my comment on this would be, the applicants already told us that you have piers and pilings underneath there every year the house moved. All they were trying to do was really stabilize it. They didn't try to encroach anymore. They didn't try to go anyplace else. They just tried to pick it up, solidify the house, and put it back down.
So you're saying that that action did not precipitate the current situation?
I do not believe so, no. The same items are still there.
Does anybody...
Doing that didn't change any of the items. It didn't change the electrical. It didn't change the hallways. It didn't change the height of whatever the wagon was or whatever in there. It didn't change any of that stuff. It just made the house more solidified so that it wasn't going to move every winter, so that they weren't going to come and find it knocked down on one side when they came back in the summertime.
Does anybody disagree with Mr. Crockett's analysis?
I agree.
Right. So what I'd like to do is, at this point, I think we can wrap up the last piece, is reaffirming the seven items. I'd like to read them in.
Okay.
And I think we've all had a chance to read the minutes. I've watched the tape. I think unless you see something that's different today, or the two new members see something different, I think we're reaffirming the old information.
And again, clarifying that they're as to both additions, or if you have something different for one of the additions over the other. Make that clear when you make your motion.
Okay. So this is just, again, I'm moving that the seven items that were previously approved and walked through, all that information, I believe is still current. We're reaffirming that and allowing the board to adjust if necessary, or different thoughts, so we can make sure that those seven are met currently. And there's no question as to whether or not the board is sticking to its position. Is that fair?
Well, if you're going to, why don't you not make the motion then? Because why don't you read them into the record?
Exactly.
If someone has something additional to add, you'll add them, and then the motion will be to re-adopt them with the additional findings.
I just want to make sure that...
Because I don't want the motion to move, if you will, as we go through the addition.
So we don't need to...
If you want to read them in, go ahead and read them in.
So I'm just going to read them through, and if anybody wants to add anything or subtract anything, because they've made it, as again, it's brought up, you can do that. It's a legitimate question. I want to either acknowledge that or eliminate it.
Okay.
So the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood. I believe that that was met previously, and I can reaffirm that position. Anybody have any different thoughts?
I agree. The front of the property narrows down significantly at the very entrance to the property, and then it widens out for a very short period before becoming a very short building envelope towards the back end of the property.
Okay.
And I think that is unique to this property.
So that's something you would add?
That's added.
Why don't you read the finding?
Okay.
That you made, and then decide if you need to add to it.
Let me read it, Mark. I'll get this one.
Yes, that's true.
"The irregular shape of the property, the larger front yard setback to the building, and the unusual framing conditions of the building create a unique circumstance, and therefore, a need for the variance. It would be unreasonable to try and pick up and move the hundred-and-fifty-year-old structure that probably would not survive the move. However, it could withstand remodeling and being brought up to code."
So anybody have anything to add to that?
My comment about the shape of the building envelope at the front, and being very, as it widens out, not being very deep, precludes and doesn't allow this.
Yeah, I don't think we addressed that originally.
So all in favor of number one being met, again, reaffirming number one.
Reaffirming it with the additional finding that the building envelope narrows in the front.
All in favor? That's unanimous on that. Go ahead, Mr. Longstaff, number two.
"Granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood, will not have unreasonable detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abutting properties. The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The proposed building will not have a detrimental effect on the use of the fair or fair market value of abutting properties. Proposed alterations and additions will also be subject to an administrative review to determine the compliance with the Higgins Beach character code before issuance of construction permit."
Anybody have anything to add beyond that?
I think the discussion that we had, go ahead, Mark.
No, I'm just going to move that we reaffirm number two as was originally written.
And I think the review done by the town helped reaffirm that, that this is being done within the accordance or the intent of the new code.
I've got a motion on there, and I can add that on there. Also, it's fine to have a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all in favor, number two's been met. It's unanimous. Number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
And the practical difficulty is a result of zoning ordinance restrictions that were passed after the building was constructed and prior to any lot lines.
I believe that is consistent today as it was back then. I would move that we reaffirm that position.
I think one thing that I didn't hear last time, that I heard this time, was the applicant brought up something about when the Higgins Beach was all divided, it was put into these blocks that they were already sitting on, and this was automatically put. I don't think we had that.
Was the date eighteen ninety-eight or something like that?
I don't think we had that information.
Thank you.
So we might want to put that in there, that that did contribute to this when Higgins Beach was all subdivided.
Anybody have a problem with adding that into the equation? I move with that addition that we reaffirm number three.
Second?
All in favor? Unanimous. Four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
And written in is, there is not any other feasible alternative to the applicant's except a variance. The roof, electrical, plumbing, as well as the structure itself, is two-by-four construction and not insulated.
And I don't think we had that. What I asked the applicant today, it has knob and tube wiring, and doesn't have a full centralized heat source either.
Just a clarification on that. No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
I think the applicants also reviewed today the ability of moving the building and how it would have affected them. I think they went over that in detail, and I think that was an alternative that was considered and was not followed up on, as well as looking at the staircase and trying to go wider in the existing spot. Couldn't be done, so then they had to look within the building, and it became clear that that was not the best alternative also.
Anybody have anything? So I'd reaffirm number four with the comments by both Mr. Crockett and Mr. Loizal. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. And then the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
"The granting of the variance request will allow the owner the ability to install code-compliant stairways, code-compliant windows, create improvements to the interior space of the house such as bathrooms, laundry area, traffic flow through the existing area, as well as proposed addition. The proposal will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties by making more code compliant."
Okay. And I would add that, with more information, I would add that the new standards...
Right, new standards.
Really have a lot to do with that. Again, comes back to, so with that comment, I move that we reaffirm that number, number five?
Number five.
Number five. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor? Number six, the granting of variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment.
"The granting of the variance will not have unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment."
I just move that we reaffirm number six.
Think there's anything more to add?
So the second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And it's not in the flood zone.
No, no, it is not.
And then the eventual standards, those provisions of the ordinance which relate to the lot area, lot coverage, furniture setback, including the buffer requirement, and then the practical difficulty.
Which we've already voted on.
Which we've already answered. So I'd like to take one final...
So the final thing is the decision, yeah.
I'd like to take one final vote on the entire package, that we reaffirming our position for September of two thousand and sixteen, and augmenting it with the information provided. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Good, thank you. So if there's anything else that we should be doing?
I think I have it. So we'll draft up your draft findings based on your votes and your discussion tonight, and bring you back a form for you to review at your next meeting.
Okay, so we've covered...
You had a motion on the thirty-eight foot limit, you had a motion on practical difficulty definition, and you had a motion reaffirming and adding to your prior findings. In both of those last two motions, you clarified that they applied to both additions.
Correct.
And you didn't have anything that was different for each addition. It was a general finding for each of those additions, and we have that in...
Yes, and want me to reaffirm that, or does that stay as well?
I got it in both motions, but you...
Okay, good. Now...
I'll put it in the motion as I've drafted it, and you can, when you review it, to make sure that it's okay at the next meeting.
Do we need to address anything for B1, or did we already do that with the dimensional standards? Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to do anything more.
That's the definition of this lets you know what a dimensional standard is.
I just didn't know if we needed to do anything. No, no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So that moves this motion. That we're closing the session. Finally, start with the next, do you want to take a five-minute break? Nine-thirty, about three minutes break. So nine-thirty, we'll start again. So we're on, reset to nine-thirty.
It wasn't me. I can go back.
What? One hour. Did you make the motion? Didn't come seconded on the last one? Did you make the second on the last one?
Uh, I did on the last one.
So you made the motion, Mr. Eber, seconded.
Yes.
Is that how you remember it?
Yes, sir.
No.
It better be.
I don't remember. And it was-
Mr. Chair, twenty-six oh five first, right? Twenty-six oh five.
Variance, full-size variance.
So remember to go through your criteria.
Mr. Wilson staff?
Yes, sir.
Notice how I said Mr. Wilson failed me?
Yes.
As long as I was on record for that.
You were.
He failed me.
Hey, what's with the insurance lesson?
I have to always do these things.
I'm sorry for you.
Remember, you can pick your friends, but you can't pick your people.
Yeah, I know, believe me, I found that out.
Oh, boy.
Suppose it is.
I like your notes, I'm trying to keep them separate.
I can get, because we have a vote for a lot.
Just spend the end.
He needed that over to me.
I mean, not, yeah, good job. Yeah. But he go away.
Okay, everybody sat. Come on. Bell set off and back there?
I think we should wake him up.
Looks like we're on, I think we're on.
I think we're on, okay. Welcome back, Laura.
Doing it live.
We're back. So, start the meeting again, we've got the appeal number twenty-six oh five, which we had switched out, it's a hardship variance request by Bruet Family, uh, Bruet, I want to make sure I pronounce it properly, Family Cottage LLC, for Champions Street, this is map U1 parcel eighty-six. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, good evening, Walter Wilson from Design Company again. I have been sitting here for the last hour and a half trying to think how I can make this presentation as quick as possible. I've come up to the conclusion it may not be very quick. One of the things I would like to say is the plan presented to the board with the House has received the administrative review from the town for compliance with the character code of the ordinance. Um, and of course it does say we may need to come in for a variance, but we have not that requirement. Um, and that was dated actually April twenty-sixth. Um, a general review of what we're planning on doing here before I get into the variance itself is just an overall, trying to cut down some time instead of spelling out everything. The existing property has a house on it, it is in the, within the seventy-five foot setback from the beach, it's at the end of Champion Street and abuts the ocean with a seawall bisecting the lot. The existing house does not meet any of the existing code requirements that have to be met, um, relating to erosion hazard area, flood zone, uh, character of compliance with the zoning ordinance, uh, it's in three or four other overlay districts of the DEP. And the plans that we drew up and we presented to the town for approval reflect all those things to make this building, this new building that's going to go on, the replacement of this building, to go on as compliant with these codes. Now, the question comes up, um, in reviewing this, is that I get kicked into this full variance because of the location, for one, and then, under the definition of what requires the variance is under section twelve, I believe, in the ordinance, uh, where a non-conforming building or structure is demolished, this is section twelve, paragraph three of the shoreline zoning ordinance, if a non-conforming building or structure is demolished or removed by its owner, it shall not be rebuilt or replaced except in conformity with the requirements of section fifteen B of the ordinance unless a grant, variance is granted for such requirements by the zoning board. Well, the zoning board isn't automatically triggered unless you don't meet fifteen B. If you meet fifteen B, you could rebuild it the way I read the ordinance. Now, the question in fifteen B basically triggers two things that respect to this property. One is that the, it says all new principal and accessory structures shall be set back from a normal high water line, uh, whatever the distance is, in a shoreline overlay, it is seventy-five feet from the resource, across the existing building, I think it's like twenty-two feet. The other thing that's triggered in here is the total lot coverage, uh, in the shoreline overlay district, uh, the property located within the CDCR one, which is the Higgins Beach character ordinance, uh, not exceed thirty-five percent. Well, the house is unique in that it has like ninety-three percent coverage on the lot now, when you include the house and the whole lot is paved, except for one section in the back, and that, that means that the impervious area is already ninety-three percent. So the impervious area, by rule of being there prior to zoning change and stuff, is grandfathered, so the lot coverage is a grandfathered issue. That means that we are left with one thing, and that would be the seventy-five foot setback. Now, I, I had had a big spiel I was going to do on this whole thing, I was going to try to cut it short as I can. Um, the shoreline zoning ordinance under chapter four oh five C, section twelve, it does allow new construction to take place within the seventy-five foot setback with restrictions. Um, a non-conforming structure may be added to or expanded, um, if such addition or expansion does not increase the non-conformity or, uh, of the, uh, of the property. And it says an existing structure may be expanded in floor area and volume up to thirty percent. It also says in the section C one C, no structure which is less than the required setback from the resource may be expanded towards that setback. And C two says a non-conforming structure may be relocated on the property, provided that it conforms to all the setbacks to the greatest extent possible. Now, these new constructions that they talk about are actually based on an existing structure be there and their, and their additions and improvements to the existing structure. So, there is construction that's allowed within the seventy-five feet, it's not just a, no you can't do it. Um, now, like I said, if, if it's, the non-conforming structure is demolished or removed by owner, it has to meet what's in fifteen B. Um, this lot, from the seawall to the back of the lot, is seventy-three feet, so the whole structure's within, the whole lot's within the seventy-five foot setback. Um, and like I said, it's already, already, uh, impervious with ninety-three percent of the property. I'm trying to skip a few things here, pardon me. I don't know. Now, I previously said about construction taking place within the seventy-five foot, the ordinance does allow for some of that structure, uh, construction, in that they all require work done on an existing structure. Now, so all those categories I talked about, an expansion, um, a relocation or reconstruction of a house in the seventy-five feet, um, that stuff's allowed within the seventy-five foot setback. And all those categories apply to properties that have been previously used with a principal residence building within the seventy-five foot setback. Now, this is what I'm getting at. The request before you in the seventy-five foot setback covers the entire property, and the request is for a replacement of an existing structure, which does not and cannot economically be improved to conform to these statutes, so that's why we need a new building. The ordinance in section fifteen states, fifteen B states all new principal structures must be set back to seventy-five feet. The request is, in front of you, is to replace an existing structure, it is not to build a new structure on a previously undeveloped parcel of land, that would be a new structure located with no other existing structure existed before. Now, the ordinance allows permission to do all kinds of instructions, construction on existing houses. So when the ordinance says all new structures, principal structures must be set back, to me that is saying that when they say no construction allowed in seventy-five foot setback, and the ordinance does allow all this work to take place on existing structures, when they say all new principal structures must be set back seventy-five feet, I'm interpreting that as being a vacant lot and you're going to put a house on it, you've got to be back seventy-five feet from, from the ocean. I'm thinking in replacing an existing structure, which is closer than the seventy-five feet, should be allowed under the ordinance and under fifteen B. Now, the proposal before you will allow the owner to meet all the regulations imposed on the property such as the FEMA flood, the EHA requirements, the front dune regulations, as well as the character ordinance, uh, in the shoreline zone. And here's where I'm getting into the question, is do we, do we even need a variance? And I'll, again, trying to make this real shot. It says in the CDCR one district, which is Higgins Beach character, the setbacks for residential building are eighteen feet, minimum primarily front setback, eight foot on sides and thirty foot on the rear property lines. Now, if you look at this piece of property, it has a little bit of frontage on Champion Street that comes down the, the right side of the property for about forty feet or so.
I gotta stop you for a second, sir.
And then Champion Street stops.
Hold on one second, I gotta stop you for a second. The, the, we're not here with a, with a request for an administrative appeal, we're here for a variance appeal.
Yes.
So, if we're going to go into administrative appeal, it's a different process.
Well, I'm just wondering if it even applies that we need a variance.
It does because we're here and it's a variance appeal.
Okay.
So it's not really, so we need to just stick to the variance appeal.
Okay, so let me, this, what I have to say is part of that variance appeal. In the character ordinance, you're allowed multiple frontages at Higgins Beach, this has a frontage on Champion Street and it has a frontage on the ocean, which is a secondary frontage, so there's two frontages on this lot. The, like I said about the setbacks, what we have to, the character ordinance says, about the eighteen foot in the front, eighteen foot on the side. Well, this property is, is described in the ordinance as having both a primary frontage, uh, primary front setback as well as a secondary fronts, uh, front setback, that being the beach. This is classified in the ordinance as a beachfront garage court lot, because it has frontage on the beach and the street. And this means that the property, by its location, has two frontages. In article four, section A four of the CDCR one ordinance, it states that all the buildings must be located behind the minimum front, side and rear setback, except as stated in article four A five. And I'd like to read four A five to you. Four A five regards to setback encroachments. And before I read this, I want to specify one thing, the shoreline ordinance district under the shoreline ordinance is part of the ordinance in the shoreline district, it's part of, part of the regular ordinance. If it, uh, the shoreline ordinance district overlay and, and streams and so forth, that governs, but in the shoreline district, the shoreline overlay district is part of the main ordinance, which means that, that parts of the main ordinance comply to that. And it says here in the setback encroachments in four A five, it says, notwithstanding the general yard requirements applicable to other districts within the ordinance, building frontages and components within the character districts may extend beyond a required front side or rear setback, as indicated for each type, provided that at least three feet is maintained in a vertical plane from the side and rear lot lines. Now, that says that all building frontages may extend beyond the required setbacks. And I'm saying that the frontage setback that the shoreline overlay district sets up for seventy-five feet from the shoreline is a frontage setback, because it says you have to be seventy-five feet from the, from the ocean. That creates a setback and a frontage on the beachside, which is on one of the frontages on this property. Um, and this is, all comes about because it says in the ordinance, if you comply to fifteen B, you don't need to come for a variance. And I'm saying the ordinance, the way I interpret it, allows the building frontage to be encroached on the setback, including the seventy-five foot setback from the beach, because that is also a beach frontage. Now, if you notice in there, it doesn't say how much the encroachments can be, that's because on something like this, the encroachment is already established. The ordinance says that no building can be building, built to, added to or improved that creates a point where you're closer to the resource than what already exists. So in this case, I'm saying that the encroachment can be allowed up to the front of the existing building, which is what we're proposing. Now, to go along with that, in the letter that you have from the, um, DEP, in the first letter from DEP, um, it says the applicant states that the reconstructed structure would be located six feet further back from the shoreline than the existing structure, and a new six-foot wide deck would be constructed within that area. Then of course they say it's highly inconsistent with the state requirement to relocate a non-conforming structure to make room for the deck, but outside the scope of a variance request, the department would not take issue with the proposed new structure in the location, in the new location six feet further back from the shoreline. So the DEP is saying that they don't see that the location we're proposing is a problem. The problem comes in seeking a variance where they say that they have some problems in us trying to meet the reasonable return. And my approach right now is first to find out if the section of the ordinance says that, uh, the frontages can be encroached upon, and with the beach being classified as a frontage to this property, are we allowed, under the ordinance, are you guys overseeing, to locate that building where it is shown on the plan, without a variance, because the ordinance says- Now, that, uh, says that all building frontages may extend beyond the required setbacks. And I'm saying that the frontage setback that the shoreline overlay district sets up for seventy-five feet from the shoreline is a frontage setback, because it says you have to be seventy-five feet from the, from the ocean. That creates a setback and a frontage on the beachside, which is on one of the frontages on this property. And this is, all comes about because it says in the ordinance, if you comply to fifteen B, you don't need to come for a variance. And I'm saying the ordinance, the way I interpret it, allows the building frontage to be encroached on the setback, including the seventy-five foot setback from the beach, because that is also a beach frontage. Now, if you notice in there, it doesn't say how much the encroachments can be. That's because on something like this, the encroachment is already established. The ordinance says that no building can be building, built to, added to, or improved that creates a point where you're closer to the resource than what already exists. So in this case, I'm saying that the encroachment can be allowed up to the front of the existing building, which is what we're proposing. Now, to go along with that, in the letter that you have from the, um, DEP, in the first letter from DEP, it says, "The applicant states that the reconstructed structure will be located six feet further back from the shoreline than the existing structure, and a new six-foot wide deck will be constructed within that area." Then of course, they say it's highly inconsistent with the state requirement to relocate a non-conforming structure to make room for the deck. But outside the scope of a variance request, the department would not take issue with the proposed new structure in the location, in the new location, six feet further back from the shoreline." So the DEP is saying that they don't see that the location we're proposing is a problem. The problem comes in seeking a variance where they say that they have some problems in us trying to meet the reasonable return. And my approach right now is first to find out if the section of the ordinance says that, uh, the frontages can be encroached upon. And with the beach being classified as a frontage to this property, are we allowed, under the ordinance, are you guys oversight, to locate that building where it is shown on the plan, without a variance, because the ordinance says, unless we have to come to the board, we have to show that a variance is needed. And that's where I'm at.
Again, I'll go back to it. If you want to challenge the, this is a different appeal. If you want to, if you want to challenge the decision that this is, needs a variance appeal, that's a different appeal than what we've got here. So if we're going to get on that path, we need to just table it and go down with an appeal.
I am willing to proceed with the variance, but I thought I'd bring that up to the board and mention it in the, uh, review, because I believe, in my own opinion, that a variance is not needed.
It's not our call. The call was made. You can appeal the call to us, but the call has been made. So that's the problem. It's not a matter, I don't, whether you, I agree or disagree with you is irrelevant. That call's been made. You can disagree with the call and, and it's appropriate process for that. But we've got a variance appeal. So that's why, I mean, it's just.
Yep. I, I understand that. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention before I went further with this. Um, but we can go through the variance and we can, uh, I can give my reasons why we think the variance should be approved even without that.
Sure. That'd be perfect.
No, it's pretty, pretty clear. Um, this is a standard hardship variance. It is very clear that a variance by our ordinance is required for a replacement of a structure. That's what they're proposing, is to replace the structure. It's not an expansion, it's not a reconstruction, it's a replacement. Um, and so here we are, the, the four criteria are, you've been through them before, that's what the board needs to find. And, you know, the, the comments by DEP, again, to clarify, I know Mr., um, Wilson took issue with this. Not my fault. The ordinance says that we have to send this to DEP. DEP's comments have to be considered by the board. They're not telling the board what to do. They're not telling the board what decision to make. But they must be considered, because that's what the law says. Okay? And I'm, I'm not saying that the comments, uh, by Mike Morse from the DEP are absolute and, and, and I'm not saying they aren't. Um, that's up to you. That's your job, not mine. But I believe it's pretty clear. So I'll leave it there and let you guys do what you need to do.
Um, you mentioned that, that was, it looks like you're looking for, they're looking for an expansion, not a replacement on the same spot.
They're rebuilt, they're tearing down the structure and replacing it. It's a new structure.
But it looks like they're taking more space.
They are taking slightly more space. And, and, and that's fine. That's what they're asking for. That's the appeal.
And just historically.
They're moving the building back and they're putting a, they're putting a, a porch on the front. And one of the reasons the porch is on there, or the, the deck, rather, I guess it's a deck, not a porch, excuse me, is because they need that access to those entrances when they elevate the structure they, they now created a need for a new structure. The debate that you folks must, you know, satisfy yourselves with, that the applicant has demonstrated, is why that is absolutely needed on that side of the building. Why, why there couldn't be a different design that would allow that access on the side of the building, for example. I'm not saying that it should or shouldn't, I'm not saying, but that's your job. You know, somebody saying something is one thing, demonstrating it is another. And that's what I caution, I think that's kind of what we just went through in the other appeal, is you need to make sure that you're satisfied they have demonstrated, not just said, not just said, this is what we want and this is how it, demonstrate it. Give us some numbers. Give us some proof. That's what you guys need and that's where we are.
So if that came as possible.
I can address the deck issue first, if you want. When you reconstruct, build a new, or raise an existing building up, under Article four, in, let me see, what section is, um, has to do with the, uh, D. Article four D, section nineteen. It deals with pilings under foundations that are four to eight feet high. And in, in that picture itself, for the, for the building, it shows the front deck going across the house. Now, if you look at the front deck under Article four A D, it shows a front porch alongside of a house. But it says on here, "Decks may only encroach into the side and rear setbacks with the exceptions of houses elevated more than six feet on pilings appear in the coastal overlay zone, in which case a deck may be used in lieu of a porch, provided it's similarly elevated." Now, what that means, on the frontage of a house, the ordinance requires a porch to be put on the front of a house. Okay? That is, the requirement of what you see on many of the houses with a front porch in the house. That goes on the front of the house. Well, this house has two frontages. One is the beach. And in the, in the beachfront carriage court, garage court, the house can face the beach and have the frontage on the beach. So the deck that's shown on the plan is elevated up the same as the house. It's allowed to take the place of a porch and it can be on the front of the house. So the location of that porch on the plans that were shown is what the character district says you can do. So that part of the porch location and size is directed through the ordinance to get to that point. And when it went through character review from the administration, it was given the approval to be there. So that takes care of the porch.
So I guess the first question is, we need to get to the decision as to whether or not you meet the standard of having to tear a building down. What, what is driving the fact that we need to replace this building? Because it's ultimately, you're talking about tearing something down and replacing it, correct?
Right.
So I'm assuming that really is what we're talking about, at least initially.
I can read my written response that I gave you, if you would like.
Do you want me, want me to go way down through these? Everybody's okay with that? Uh, the land question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted.
Are we on the criteria already? Jumping ahead of my speech. Let me see, where are we here? Where are we? Okay, let's see here. So you asked me a question?
Pardon?
You asked me a question?
Yeah, let's, let's just jump right into the, um, we've got to, we've got to establish whether or not meets the threshold of requiring a building to be torn down, because ultimately, that gives us, without that, we're, we're not even going to be here.
Okay, so you want me to read my answers that I gave describing the project and why a variance is needed?
Yes. So the land variant, uh, question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. So we've got a house there, that's there now, right?
Well, that's jumping ahead to the variance appeal question.
That's.
Where's the variance appeal, right? Yeah, I thought you wanted to hear why the, why I say that variance is needed and what, why the project needs a variance.
We know it needs a variance. We're just, we've already established that the only alternative is to go back and say you want an administrative appeal.
I'll jump forward then. Okay. Uh, question one. "In order to protect a residential building and the use on the property from flood elevation, both current and future destruction, needs to be elevated and supported by pilings. The existing structure was not intended to be supporting with this type of foundation due to the framing in the existing cottage, and trying to utilize it on the site would be futile at best. In order to comply with the regulations imposed on the property by the DEP overlay districts, a new building meeting's restriction is proposed. If the variance is not granted, the property would not meet the erosion hazard area requirements, would not meet the flood zone requirements, would not be in compliance with the town of Scarborough character-based ordinance, and would create a possible danger to abutting properties if it was destroyed by flood, flood or wave action. In order to maintain a long-established residential use on the land and protect the structure from flooding and also comply with the regulations and requirements that have been placed on the property, the land in question cannot use, yield a reasonable return without granting a variance."
Okay, and the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood?
"The need for a variance is due to several factors. The property is bisected by a seawall that reduces the land area to the existing grandfather's size of fifty foot by seventy-three foot. The property is located within the seventy-five foot setback from the resource of the Atlantic Ocean. The town of Scarborough imposes building setbacks to cover most of the property. The property orientation to Champion Street is not consistent with the other properties in the area. And due to the DEP overlay districts, the improvements to the property are needed in order to comply, create a unique circumstance that is uncommon conditions, not shared, shared by many of the Higgins Beach neighborhood. In order to comply with these unique circumstances, a variance is needed."
And the, um, granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality.
"The granting of the requested variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The plans have been reviewed with the town administration review for compliance with the Higgins Beach character-based ordinance and has been approved for building size, height, location, and design."
So. Any answer I had this?
Four.
It wasn't four, I'm sorry. Uh, hardship is not a result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner, I'm sorry.
"The hardship is not a result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner of the property. The hardship is the, is the, is the applicant's desire to comply with the regulations and requirements that have been placed on the property by the town of Scarborough and the zoning ordinance in various applicable DEP overlay districts, the FEMA flood plain, the erosion hazard area designation. The property was developed for residential use before any of these districts were imposed, uh, districts, uh, imposed, uh, were imposed on the property." Now, I would like to say that those are the reasons I think we need a variance, coupled with the fact that all the houses down this section of town and along the other sections in the town are going to have to do what this applicant is requesting. The state's going to require it. The federal government's going to require it.
Here's, here's the problem with that, and I need to be, this is one of the concerns I had.
And most of these houses cannot take and be raised up and kept, because they aren't built to be put on pilings. And it's a thing we're going to have. Now, to that, I would like to look at your staff notes and what, uh, was said in the staff notes, the most recent one. This talks about the ordinance, where it says the board of Scarborough zoning ordinance is more restrictive than the state. The state has no problem with doing this, because the state guidelines say that if structures remove damage to the stored regardless of cause by more than fifty percent, it can be reconstructed if a permit is obtained within eighteen months. And the placement of structure must meet the resource setback to the greatest extent possible, as determined by the planning board. In other words, the state doesn't have the restriction that the town of Scarborough does. And it goes on, it says, "The staff has provided this comparison for informational purposes. The governing regulations in the case is the town ordinance, not the state guidelines. However, the board should note that the staff does intend to propose a zoning, shoreline zoning update that would more closely resemble the state guidelines." So we are in a situation like the last one, where what we have proposed meets the, the state DEP situation. And the ordinance that we have is creating a hardship for redoing it unless we get a variance to do such a thing, which the state allows.
Do we have any letters or files on this?
Uh, no.
I couldn't see anything.
No.
When I open the public, anybody wish to speak on this issue from the public? Anybody wish to speak on this? See, now I'll close the public section.
I would like to make one comment before we go any further.
Yep.
If in your deliberations, you think that the, the variance that we're applying for may require more information from you, because I did rush this a little bit tonight and we jumped through it, uh, I'd be willing to either give it to you tonight, or we could do another meeting at another time. But anyway, I hope you can go through it this evening.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad to put that on the table. It helps. So here's, here's my concerns. We haven't established at all that the building is sound or not sound. So to me, it comes down to being, the, the state's regulations that are being placed on this have nothing to do with whether or not the house is sound. State's not making them do anything. Not saying, you can't occupy that property unless you raise that. Not saying that. They're just putting, they're putting their requirements on. They, they may want to be proactive in needing those, but that's their call and I respect that. I mean, I actually have a lot of respect for that. But I don't see how that is the reason for us needing to bring this to the board for variance. I don't, I don't think that unless we can establish the property can't bring value. I would argue that, yeah, if you could prove that the house is in a situation where it just needs to be, it's, it's in trouble and you got to replace it, fine, I think we can then have that discussion, but if we're not establishing that, we're only saying right now, all I'm hearing right now is that this is about the state's mandates and, and the new regulations with FEMA. Well, that doesn't have anything to do with anything we deal with.
So can, can we hear the applicant address that, please?
Sure.
Well, that was what I was going to read before you jumped into the thing, is to describe the project and why your variance was needed.
Go ahead.
Okay.
No problem. I just want to get it out there so you know where I'm coming from. And, and, and let me, I'll give you a heads up on another one, just so you know.
Okay.
"The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood." What that's about is, if in fact there's a big problem in the neighborhood, it needs to be addressed to ordinance as opposed to variance. So if you tell me there's a whole bunch of homes that are going to be affected by this, it doesn't belong here. It belongs to the ordinance committee. So it's either, it's either a specific issue by itself that's not related, or it's in fact a global issue. And, and so I guess we've got to define which one that is. Uh, yeah, I tried to stop you on that part, but, uh, go ahead.
You know, we did a, uh, a variance last year on one of those houses right along there.
I don't remember, I mean, did it need it?
Yeah.
I, I don't remember the property, was it?
I came to the board before under the same situation. It was a house about three houses down.
I, I don't remember it and I don't know whether or not it had anything to do with the structure. I'm coming back to, my concern is, we need to establish that the home has no useful, useful life left, to me, to go fast. And you might disagree with that. Please respond and feel free to jump in.
Okay. I'll read what I, my explanation on that. It may not be inclusive enough for you, but I'll read it anyway. "The existing cottage measures twenty-eight by four inches by thirty-five foot, four inches, has a concrete block foundation with a crawl space. The roof is a gable frame with approximately a six-twelve pitch. The interior first floor plan contains a living room, kitchen, bathroom, and four bedrooms. The stairway leads up to an open loft family area with a half bath. The property extends down to the low water mark and bisected by the seawall. The existing cottage is also loaded, located in the erosion hazard zone, and a home in this location may be increased up to thirty percent, like we said before, and the foundation elevated. The existing flood plain level requires the first floor to be one foot above the minimum flood plain level. And in the erosion hazard zone, it's required to have a minimum three-foot clearance from the grade to the bottom of the house, they call it the freeze board. These requirements result in a first floor elevation minimum height of sixteen point two. The existing height on first floor is twelve point nine. The flood levels are assumed to be raised and may increase to the sixteen-foot level, and that will require a finished floor in this house to be at nineteen feet. And we're proposing it to be at nineteen foot, one and a half inches." "The existing cottage was built to sit on a concrete block foundation. The exterior walls are two-by-four with limited insulation. The roof is constructed with two-by-six rafters, probably twenty-four inches on center. There might be more than that. The second floor joists are two-by-six rafters with twenty-four inch on centers." The second floor joists are two-by-six rafters with twenty-four inch on centers. The roof framing does not have seal and cross ties as required by code. And the stairs up to the second floor are, are non-code compliant. The plumbing and electrical systems need updating to be code compliant, although the electrical is not the old knob and tube. The heating system is just a monitor-type unit in the living room and there's no central heat, heating in the house. The bedroom windows on the second floor area are small and do not meet the egress code and the height of the walls is such that you cannot get an egress window up there. The existing cottage contains several non-compliant building code areas. The existing building does not meet the requirements of the character-based zoning of the Higgins Beach and building shape, roof pitch, and fenestration. The exterior does not meet the required building components that the code requires as previously explained, um, and of course it doesn't mean any of the DEP overlays. Even more important is the condition of the structure itself. The structure was intended, like I said, to sit on the concrete foundation and not be elevated and placed on pilings. The existing structure would need to be raised, moved off the site in order to install the new pilings. The cottage would then have to be brought back in to sit onto the new pilings. This will require substantial reframing of the first floor system and the first floor exterior walls of the building. And needless to say, we have the problem of where you're gonna store the cottage once it's raised up and moved. The roof system on the second floor joists would then have to be removed off the cottage after it's brought back and the finance cost of doing this would probably exceed, well exceed, the value of the existing building. In order to comply with the requirements set forth in the erosion hazard zone, the V-zone and the flood zone, the shoreline zone, and all the other zones involved on this, uh, the owners proposing to build a new cottage on a piling, on the pilings to take the place of this cottage that cannot be, like I said before, brought up to date, brought up to code, and in no way economically reused to meet these requirements. And if a variance is not granted, the existing cottage will remain as is and the rising flood level and future storms will eventually take its toll and, uh, may cause damage to the neighborhood. Now, one of the things that it says here about the definition per, uh, variance, "A variance is a relaxation of terms of the ordinance which such variance would not be contrary to public interest and where owing to conditions peculiar to the property and not to the results of action by the applicant, the little enforcement of the ordinance would result in undue hardship." And I'm saying that the conditions that are peculiar to this are not only lot size and location, it's all the overlays that go with it and all the restrictions we have to have to comply to the new ordinances that are being placed on this property. And the new, and the existing structure cannot feasibly, even economically or feasibly, be utilized to meet these restrictions. Now, and the result of this is not of actions taken by the applicant, it's by all the government officials that imposed all these restrictions on the applicant. And he's trying to comply and make it a legitimate, um, constructed building. And in doing so, it complies with the character ordinance. We have approval from them for the bu, building design. And there is another little thing under the shoreline zoning ordinance. Section twelve A one, under the purpose. "It is the intent of this ordinance to promote land use conformities, except that non-conforming construct, conditions can further be, uh, used. Except as otherwise provided in this ordinance, a non-conforming condition shall not be permitted to become more non-conforming." And I'm saying by leaving that house there and not recognizing all the state overlays, it is allowing the house to become more non-conforming because of all the restrictions that are being put onto it. And if he doesn't get the variance to do what the proposal says, the property will, will always be more non-conforming and the town will be allowing that to happen. So, I think that the variance that we're asking for, there's not only a legitimate variance, I think it's a proper variance and I think it meets the character, the, um, the definition spelled out in the ordinance for such a variance in this case. And I think hardship is met primarily because the condition of the house, you cannot raise it, and the overlay districts that are being placed on the property are making this property more non-conforming all the time.
Um, question from the board?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm struggling with kind of the same thing you were. You just went over all the shoreline and all the other regulations and things that are going on in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You're, you're kinda making the case against this.
Well, I'm not making a case, I'm not making a case against it because the town hasn't addressed it. And so, when an individual wants to do something on his property, he has to come in and ask for the variances and so forth that, that are in place. I mean, if the town wants to address it and take care of it, so you haven't come in for a variance, that's great, but the town hasn't done it and we're here on a one-by-one individual application coming before the board. Um, uh, like Ed said, I came in before on the board and just down the house from here a few, couple, three years ago, and we got the variance to destroy the building, take it down, tear it up, put pilings on and raise the house up and construct a new building under the same situation.
Uh, if it's, again, I, I don't wanna get in, we don't, we don't, number one, we don't go by precedent, so I really don't wanna go there. Number two, I don't have any idea what the condition of the house was. I, and I don't wanna...
That might've happened, Max, in a time when you weren't here.
But, but even so, it's, we don't have precedent. We don't go by precedent, we go by what we have in front of us and the presentations each time. So, I am not trying to be difficult, but at the same thing, I'm trying to be straight. And what I see, and I'll be candid, I'm, I'm, and I'm not gonna be a jerk, I'm really not, but I just don't see this even coming close to giving us enough information to say this property is in such a condition that it needs to be replaced. If the borrower, if the, if the applicant wants to improve the property and bring it more in conformance, they can do that, but they can do it as it sits. There's, there's nothing that reaches the, the standard that I've heard and, and what, whatever impositions that the state has put on, and I think the, the one argument you could make, it hasn't been made, is if they're gonna do any work on this thing, does it trigger the fifty percent rule? And does that work? I don't know. I'm just throwing something out to try and help you a little bit, but that's, the only thing I'm hearing right now is that someday, somewhere, we might get a flood. And, uh, to be candid with you, there's different views on that. So, I don't think that's enough of an argument. Uh, and yeah, the state's putting all kinds of regulations on most of those, and they write it from the federal government, most is to recover the losses they lost. So, they're expanding it out, we know that. So, but that has nothing to do with what, whether or not that property is useful, viable, meets the standard of a variance appeal, which is a pretty high standard. Uh, I need some thoughts from everybody else here.
The existing building where it sits cannot be made compliant with any of those rules.
Of course, that's probably true.
Okay.
I agree.
Can't. And that existing building where it sits is designed to be on a block foundation with a three-foot crawl space. You just can't raise that up and put it on pilings, it doesn't work that way. You need a whole different structure undercarriage and this house is not set up for it. So, you can't raise it up.
Explain that to me, please.
Well, the floor joist system under the house, I believe it's two-by, sixes in someplace and two-by-eights. They are designed for the framing members to come over and sit on a plate which sits on a foundation wall. The carrying timber under the house is located from the front to the back down the middle of the house. Simple construction for, for that. When you build it on pilings, you put the pilings up, you gotta put top beams that go across the pilings, they have to be connected with metal brackets. The floor joist system then sit perpendicular to those, they all have to be connected with brackets for wind loads, shear loads, and all this other kind of engineering work that has to be done so that the thing doesn't sway. Okay? The floor joist system itself that goes in is two-by-twelves and that's done to help the bracing effect of the house. On this house, you'd have to reconstruct the hole underneath of the house in order to put it on pilings and to get it done correctly.
When you say reconstruct the underside of the building, explain that to me.
The floor joists and the carrying beam, they aren't designed to sit on top of support beams with pilings and be connected in such a way that you can brace the house.
In their current arrangement.
In the current arrangement.
And you're saying that you couldn't oppose that direction and come up with a new system that supported that and carry the load of the building onto pilings? That's what I just heard you say.
It's, I'm not gonna say you can't possibly...
It said in your, in your statement, you said futile at best.
Futile at best.
Right. So...
To keep the structure the way it is.
I want more details.
You have to change it.
Because I don't believe so. I don't think that's an accurate statement.
No.
I think there are other support systems that could be put in that could accomplish that and get the, the bottom of the building supported, act well enough that you could put it on pilings.
If you go...
And you're assuming the pilings have to go directly under the building. That's another assumption you've made.
Yes.
That's an assumption.
Yes. That's what the code requires, that all foundation must be under the building.
Okay.
Okay? That's in the code. The, there are other ways you could possibly do it.
I agree.
By diagonal bracing steel beams and so forth.
Mm-hmm. Angle piles.
Possibly.
Mm-hmm.
And that has, that would, that's not conventional methods, that's going beyond convention.
But it says futile at best, so if it's futile...
Yeah, using conventional methods, yeah. It would be.
We have to look at all options, right? And in this situation, I think you have to look further in your options because your building envelope on this particular postage stamp is nonexistent.
Yes, it is.
And if you look at your building, your building envelope exceeds what you have for in a building envelope right now.
No. The building is less square footage in size.
Footprint?
Yes. Footprint of the building is defined by the code.
Well, no, no, wait, I don't wanna hear it's defined by the code. If I look at the footprint of the envelope of the building today...
Right.
And the future building...
Right.
Is the future building, does it have a larger envelope?
Smaller.
Okay.
The existing one's one thousand and one square feet, proposed will cover nine hundred and fifty-two.
What's your buildable envelope? Total square footage?
That's it. Well, plus the porches and the stairs, which aren't counted in the lot coverage under the ordinance and the character zone. So, you can't count those.
Yeah, but you're going solely by the character zone and I'm looking at a lot that is waterfront, that's in multiple different zones, and I'm saying, yeah, you got character, but this is a little different.
Lot coverage can't be different than what the zone calls for. And his interpretation of lot coverage is based on the zone.
I understand that. But you also look at impervious surfaces, pavement, right?
Right. Ninety, ninety-three percent is impervious.
I totally understand that.
Yeah.
That's all, you're, you're talking details around this particular ordinance. I get that. But I'm also looking at, the DEP is saying they don't agree.
Don't agree with what?
I'll read it in the record. The, the department would not take issue with the proposed new structure house in the new location, six feet further back from the shoreline, but the town could not permit the new deck. So, they're saying the deck, we could not permit.
That's because they didn't read and understand the character ordinance and what's allowed for a deck, which...
It also stated...
Went through and is approved.
As such, and this is later in the, the letter, it says, "As such, the department notes that a variance for such a project can't legitimately be granted, so in their opinion, they don't think we should be granting this." And then down at the bottom of that statement, it also says, "It's the department's position that the strict application of the terms of the ordinance would not result in undue hardship. As such, the department recommends the Board of Appeals deny the variance application on this basis. There simply is no legitimate conclusion otherwise."
That's, that's the, Mike, that's Mike's opinion and he wrote...
Yeah. I, I'd like to hear your opinion on why you would disagree with that.
I disagree with it for some of the reasons that I've already stated and read tonight. I also disagree with it because he didn't take in consideration what those restraints were that were put on the property to understand why the variance is needed. His interpretation was based on just picking those fourth points up and saying, "Well, you can't meet this, you can't meet that." He did not have any input from our side, he did not listen to the, to the rebuttal that we give as to why we think we should do it. He just issued those on a blank statement after just reading the ordinance with no understanding of what we're trying to do, in my opinion. And therefore, he didn't base his conclusion that he put in the letter on the zoning board process of coming in and discussing all this, he just sat in his office and wrote what he thought was non-compliant.
Well, just, just one point of order, um, he, he had your entire application submittal, so he had all of your written explanations.
Yes.
So, you can't say that he didn't have any of your arguments. He did have your arguments.
He didn't have arguments that are presented to the board to do a thorough...
But he had all of your written comments.
Yes.
And they were pretty extensive. I just wanna clarify.
They were.
You're, you're misrepresenting what he had. I wanna clarify for the board.
Like I said, in my...
Not saying he's right or wrong, Walt, I'm just saying he had all of your application materials.
Yes.
So, so he had everything that the board has. The only thing he didn't have was you.
I don't know if you read them, that's the thing. I have no conclusion on that.
I...
He doesn't say in his letter that he did, he just said, "Based on his opinion, you can't meet those four standards."
Right.
I, I think we have to take the assumption that, that everybody here is professional, are professionals and you can't, uh, he's not gonna just, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can go there, we're, we're, we're spinning wheels.
Yeah.
So...
And I, I don't, I really don't think that the DEP office has any legitimate, um, legal authority to tell the board what the interpretation of a zoning ordinance is in the first place.
I'm not, I don't think we should, I don't think we should bank it on what they say. I, I think we need to be dealing with what we believe based on the facts. And I can, I come back to what have we established the four criteria, which is the land can't make a reasonable return.
Well, I, I, is there a differential settlement issue right now on the structure?
Um, on the second floor part, yes. On the first floor part, there is a lower corner in one of the rear bedrooms. Uh, but other than that, the house is not sinking three feet in one direction or anything like that, no. Okay?
Do you wanna go through the questions?
Yes.
I mean, for us, or...
I mean, I mean, I guess what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, again, I like to give people their, the chance to survive as opposed to just having it shut off and pass away to you. But that being said, I don't see anything in here that's giving us any, any hope to even make the argument. I mean, I don't get it. I mean, I, I, I think you went at it from a different approach than normal. I think you went at it from the approach that you don't even need to be here and consequently it's skewed that way and, and I have no problem with you wanting to go back and, and regroup.
I can take it back and give you more information on the structure if you want.
Um, your, your call. If you want a table, I'm willing to let you tables.
I would like to footnote one last thing before I leave. If we have to raise the existing building and put it up on pilings, we have to come before the board. That require...
That, Mr. Chairman? That's incorrect. You can, you can elevate for floodplain or sand dune requirements without a variance. We, we made that change, that amendment in our ordinance.
That's, that's in there.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about is the building itself. It won't meet the character ordinance of the town.
Doesn't matter, doesn't have to. You can go ahead and elevate it.
The, the character ordinance isn't designed to be used as a weapon against the town.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. If, if he can, he can, could put the new structure on pilings, basically what he wants to do?
Right.
With, with the, the point that he's trying to make...
And by the way, the house right next door, that's what happened to it about three or four years ago. And I'd really like to know how that got happened or that happened and he can't get his.
Okay. Let's, um...
We can't, we can't deal with that tonight, Ed, but I'd be happy to come back with a report on whatever house it is you're talking about, I have no idea. All I wanted to say is that Walt is making the case or trying to make the case that although he incorrectly assumed he couldn't elevate it, he can elevate it, but he's also saying the structure can't be elevated and sit on pilings in its current form. I just wanna clarify all that. But it does not require a variance to elevate for floodplain or sand dune, uh, reasons. If you wanna get your flood insurance lowered and you wanna elevate your structure, you can do that and you don't need a variance to do it. In the same location, you can go ahead and elevate it.
I wouldn't...
That never used to be the case.
Well, elevate and rebuild or just elevate?
Just elevate. Just elevate. Just elevate.
They can remodel.
Yeah, you can remodel, you can fix it, you can, you can change the flooring system, or the framing system, rather, to, you know, if, if it's possible to do so. You can do all of that for flood, because it's all required in order to get it elevated for floodplain reasons. That can happen.
And that's what I mentioned in my write-up. We could do that. I'm not saying you have to come with a variance just to elevate. But if we did elevate, we have to move the cottage off the lot, bring it back on after the structure of the, the flooring was done, set the house on top of there. And then we'd have to renovate that house according to the ordinance, which is allowed to do by thirty percent volume and size, which is what we're proposing. But it would cost a huge amount of money to do that, to get to the same down point if we get the variance to put the house up new in the first place. Instead of putting it there and tearing it all apart and rebuilding it once we elevate it.
The challenge is, and I need to end it here. The challenge is that we haven't established the need specific to the specific house that says that it's not viable. So to go any further than that, until we've established that, is a complete waste of this board's time. Because we, we're not there. So if we can't get past number one, or A, in the, the four criteria, we need to stop. Because we haven't established that. Nothing here has said anything about the property. I get that people want to do that, and I get they're trying to use the, the guidelines, in my opinion, I'm going to be blunt and probably a little bit harsh, but as a weapon against the town. But the ordinance isn't designed to be used against the town. The ordinance is designed to help the community develop, if it fits. It's, but you can't use it as a, as a, as a weapon to say, "I want this because that's what the ordinance says." It's backwards. They're saying, if you're going to build something, we want you to be as, as close to these requirements as possible. But you can't spin it and say, "Well, you, you're making us do this, and so we want it the way I, I want it." Now, that, that doesn't meet the criteria of the four, of the variance appeal.
Well, let me.
If it was just a regular home that didn't require variance appeal, I, good, go at it, no problem, but.
Let me back up a section here. If you took that existing house right where it is, it's allowed to be expanded thirty percent in square footage and volume.
That's questionable.
Okay? That house would end up looking just like we're talking about, except sitting on its concrete block foundation.
Right.
But we can't do that because we're in the erosion hazard zone, which requires the pilings to be under any renovation of a house. That's required. So we can't just take the house where it is and redo it.
But there's no trigger to allow for the variance appeal. We haven't hit the trigger, which is the, we haven't. What they want is not what is allowed, and it just doesn't work that way. So here's my advice. I would table it and try and regroup it and come back if, if I, that'd be my suggestion, or we can vote.
I'll probably ask to do that, but I'm, I'm.
Right now, it's either we're going to vote on it or we can table.
I can do it. But I can ask to be tabled, but I'd like to have some guidance into what you're looking for, because I have conflicts and ordinances to say you can do this and can't do this.
Um, I think we're going to do the best we can to give you advice. Again, if it doesn't meet the threshold, we can't get advice for something that doesn't meet it. I don't know. But I don't have any information that says that it meets it at this point. So I'm going to move to table this for further information for two months. We can come up with it in the next two months, and then after that, it would drop off.
Second.
Discussion of motion? Actually, tables and discussion. On favor? That's, uh, one, and the end. So you, you got a room to breathe on it, but, um, I think you got to make the argument.
And I think, again, I think you're saying it need, you need more proof as to hardship. Is that true, Mr. Chairman?
There's no hardship. No, I've, I've heard. There's no hardship.
Yeah.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Who said that?
I did.
You're right.
Okay, next appeal. And I think, I think we have to go to one more appeal. I can appreciate if you have to leave. I think we owe the people that we bumped to be heard tonight. I'm not sure we're going to get to anybody else. Pardon?
Okay. You're going to go against the ten thirty thing?
I think we owe, I think we owe that if the board agrees, um.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you recall, this one, we had already really gone through everything, and it was only the character issue. And I think that's what, um, Ms. St. Clair wants to speak to tonight, and it really should be fairly quick if she can address that one thing. Because you went through all, um, all the other criteria already.
And Mr. Chair, can we be candid and explain what that means to the other applicants that are here behind this?
Yeah, we want, we're, this will be the last one we hear tonight. We won't be able to go any further than this. So if anybody's waiting for another one, it won't happen. You're welcome to stay if you don't have popcorn or anything, but, um.
We apologize that we weren't able to see you.
Uh, the, you'll be.
You'll be the first on the next.
That's correct. You'll be the first on the next meeting.
Agenda.
Yes. And you don't have to do anything, uh, other than just show up. And you'll be the first ones. It'll just go in the continuing order that it is, okay? Again, I apologize, uh, at, um.
And like Mr. Stone said, if you can address the specific issue at hand rather than going through everything.
So that would mean, uh, nine white sands is the first, next, next meeting?
So we get, we go, uh, yeah, we, we go nine white sands, then it would be, um, six pearl and thirty-nine ocean, and then whatever comes after that, somebody else comes on. But you'll be in the next row. And again, I apologize for not being able to do better than that. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, this is appeal number, um, twenty-six oh seven. It's a variance appeal that was brought back to us. Patricia Crawford, trustee for the Patricia Elaine Crawford Revocable Trust, eleven, Eleventh Street, uh, Mrs. Map, U twenty-three, parcel seventy-three. And, oh, introduce yourself, and what we're trying to wrap up on that one. And before I do that, I need to establish that the board is okay with continuing. We haven't taken a vote on that. Is the board okay with this? That we are okay with continuing past ten thirty, anything to get a fix?
Yes. Uh, I'm second in motion.
Okay. On the favor? Okay, opposed? One opposed. Okay. So go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nancy St. Clair. I'm a St. Clair associate. Here tonight on behalf of the Patricia Crawford Revocable Trust, wait, sorry. And we were here before you folks back in July, and at our request, uh, this application was tabled. During that process, we went through the, uh, four criteria for the hardship. And the one that the board members asked us to provide additional information on is actually criterion number three. And that is the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We've provided some additional information for you folks, and I just wanted to go over a couple of things before we kind of get into that. You should have received today two letters from abudders, uh, with regard to the project. The applicant, uh, had spoken to their neighbors. I presented them the plans. I do have a hard copy. I can read them if you like. They're very short.
If you'd like to read them in, and we could just take them afterwards. That'd be great.
Right in this package.
Here in this package?
I will.
Nope, she's ahead of her curve, so, uh, she's already put it in there for us.
You've got them? They should be.
Yeah, I can just read, we'll read them in at the appropriate time. But if you want to read them in, you're welcome to also.
Okay, that's fine. Um, the first one that I have is, uh, signed by Peter Gross and Steve Gross, who are trustees. They are actually on five Eleventh Street, so if you, Brian, if you go to the, I think it's the next, that one right there. Um, five Eleventh Street is actually the house that is behind, uh, this home. It's the yellow one. Brian has the cursor on it. So, uh, the head of this is addressed to the same, it's addressed to Brian regarding the variance application, additional information on eleven Eleventh Street regarding Patricia E. Crawford. And it says, "Dear Brian, no objections to the attached proposed design of eleven Eleventh Street Scarborough Main." And that's signed by Peter Gross and Steve Gross, trustees. The next letter, uh, is addressed to Brian as well. This is from the owner of twelve Eleventh Street. They're actually located on the opposite side of Eleventh Street. Uh, the building was sort of the reddish roof on the other side. And it says, "Dear Brian, no objections to the attached proposed design of eleven Eleventh Street Scarborough Main as presented in architect's, uh, pictures." And this is signed by Paula A. Allen, twelve Eleventh Street Scarborough, July twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. So those two letters should have been received by you folks. Uh, those were, uh, letters that were provided by the applicant as a result of their conversations with their neighbors. Uh, Kevin Bishop, who is, uh, Ms. Crawford's brother, actually prepared these photos, and I'm just going to go through them quickly. Because one of the items that we, you know, talked about was the neighborhood, so we wanted to give you a little bit better visual of the neighborhood. So the first slide that you have up here is, um, what Brian refers to as the eagle view. Uh, and this shows the, uh, double arrows are pointing to the actual cottage in question. And you can see Eleventh Street, uh, coming down from East Grand Avenue. It terminates, uh, sort of midway between the two existing cottages, uh, eleven, Eleventh Street, and then across the street, that sort of reddish one. That's the twelve Eleventh Street, uh, one that I just read the letter from. So from an aerial perspective, you can sort of see one of the criteria is with regard to density. As we had noted in our prior discussions, we are not changing the building footprint. Uh, it will remain the same, and the home will remain in the same location on the lot. So from a density standpoint, we're not making any changes, uh, with regard to that. And you can get a little bit better feel for some of the other homes, uh, in the neighborhood with this image. The next slide shows a view from the ocean, and this is looking sort of northwesterly. Uh, the ocean would be to your back. The cottage is sort of in the middle of the picture. The brown building, uh, to the left of the cottage, uh, is the abutting property to the west. And the building with the yellow building with the reddish roof is, uh, the abutting building to, uh, the east, and that is twelve Eleventh Street. The next image shows just a close-up view. Uh, the applicant's home is on the right in this image. The, uh, brown building that we just mentioned is the property that is, there's actually two houses on that property. That's at ninety-six East Grand is the address of that home. And in the background there, you can just sort of see a building that has a lot of windows. That's actually five Eleventh Street. That was the other letter that the folks, uh, submitted, uh, with regard to that. So the next, uh, slide is looking easterly. The applicant's cottage is on the left. And again, twelve Eleventh Street is on the right with the reddish roof in that. You can get to see sort of a view looking down, uh, from some of the other homes that are on the other, sort of parallel streets coming down towards the ocean. You get a little bit better feel for building heights, density, that type of thing. Uh, the next photo, Kevin was, uh, very brave and was on the roof of the porch when he took this photo. Uh, but it's a, a view looking up Eleventh Street. So if you look sort of to the, diagonally to the left in the photo, that's the photo of eleven Street headed back towards East Grand Avenue. And, uh, the house that's primarily in this photo is twelve Eleventh Street. And the roof that you see on the, on the left-hand side is the roof of the porch of the existing cottage. The next photo is looking up Eleventh Street. Uh, the house that is shown in that picture is actually on the corner of East Grand Avenue and Eleventh Street. Uh, the driveway for five Eleventh Street is sort of mid-range, uh, near where the gentleman is walking in the photo. The following photo is actually a close-up view of five Eleventh Street. That's the house that's immediately behind. And as I mentioned, that's one of the folks that provided a letter of support, uh, for, uh, the project. The next view is looking, actually, they're actually on five Eleventh Street, looking back towards the ocean. Uh, and eleven Eleventh Street is primary in view. So this shows a close-up of the back view, uh, of the cottage. Uh, the porch on the back, the open porch on the left-hand side, and, uh, the sort of wing, if you will, towards the west. The next photo shows a little bit closer up view of the two abutting houses to the west. Uh, again, that is, um, ninety-six East Grand Avenue. That's that property there. Back to the rooftop view again. This is looking at those same, uh, homes on that. Uh, and this is actually from the top of the roof on the west side of the cottage. The next photo is actually looking in a westerly direction, and it shows that brown building is actually the one that is adjacent to this lot. That's the ninety-six East Grand, and it just shows some of the additional homes along the oceanfront, uh, looking westerly on the site. And the next one is looking easterly, further easterly, so you get a little bit more of the surroundings, uh, in that area. And you can see the, the different types of architecture that are, are throughout that, uh, segment, if you will, and the number of stories of buildings, uh, in that area. And again, this is just a further sort of close-up view of pretty much the same image. The last one is, are some of the new homes that have been recently built. These are actually on the other side, um, down by, uh, King Street. But it does show a representation of what's more of the, the newer architecture that is coming forward in the area. The next slide are actually the model representations of the building. When we were here before you folks last, one of the concerns was with regard to, uh, the massing of the building, the size of it, uh, in comparison to some of the surrounding buildings, uh, as well as the, the change in the building from the existing cottage size. So I wanted to show you some updated plans. Uh, if you recall from the last presentation that we made, uh, these are quite a bit downsized, if you will, especially on the second and third story, uh, with regard to that. So the next shot is just sort of a, a zoom around view. This is a view looking sort of northerly, uh, from the ocean. It would be sort of at your back. That, uh, lower front corner is actually the existing sunroom, uh, that is there, just new windows in that. Uh, the front on what would be sort of the, you know, the ocean, back to the ocean path, little steps there, that's the open porch that would be closed in, uh, on the first floor. If you remember from the photos, this is the, the westerly wing of the site. It's a bit wider, uh, than it is now, but it's, it's still that same westerly wing. Uh, as I noted, we're not changing the footprint of this building. It does need to stay where it is and the size that it is. But the second, uh, and third stories are where some of those changes have occurred. So on to the next slide. This is sort of a back corner view, uh, looking what would be southeasterly of the site. Um, the back porch area is sort of that, that notch, if you will. Each one of those steps is, if you look at the plan here, you can see those are the steps that are located. The notches in the building right here are those notches that are up there, right in there. The next view is sort of a, a eagle view, if you will, uh, looking at the proposed new renovations to the building. Uh, there is an open second-story deck, uh, above the enclosed existing porch on the first floor. Uh, and to balance the building, they've actually added this, uh, dormer on what would be the easterly side of the building. So, uh, that's a renovation to the older plan where, if you recall, that was quite a bit larger, uh, in the original, or the prior seminal, I should say. So the next view is basically the same orientation, just from the ground elevation, uh, with regard to that. So, uh, as I mentioned, we have, uh, an existing building that is within its existing footprint. We're not proposing to move it. We are proposing to do some renovations to the size of the second and third floor. The first floor would remain the same. The porches, the open porches would be, uh, filled in. So, um, when we met with you folks last, criterion number three, as I mentioned, uh, is the criteria that, uh, you folks had concern about. Those are the older elevations, I believe, Brian.
Yeah.
That you're going through. So that is a comparison. That was what was presented to you folks last time. Uh, and as you can see, we've made quite a bit of change to reduce the scale of that. Um, we do have some narrative information with regard to that item that I'd be happy to read to you folks if you wish. Uh, but it is contained in your application materials, uh, as well.
Sir?
Thank you.
Pardon?
I said, yes, thank you.
So we can keep this fairly narrow because we've gone through pretty much all the criteria, and we really wanted to address, I think, some concerns about the style. Um, I think, Ms. Shupin, I think you both had, you two are the biggest proponents of changing it, right?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, if you'd like to speak to what your thoughts are.
Well, specifically, um, what was the square footage of your proposal last month? It's about thirty-one thousand, one hundred square feet. I'm just wondering what the square footage of this design.
I'm just wondering what the square footage of this design is.
I did a comparison of the existing building and the proposed plan that you have before each, and I'm not sure I have the exact numbers on a comparison between the two, but it's about 2,060 square feet on the first floor. That is the existing cottage plus the open porch. That doesn't change, so there's no net change there. On the second floor, the architect has measured the floor at 935 square feet as existing and we're proposing 1160, so that's a 224 square foot expansion of the second floor. The attic space did not have an area that would be at an eight-foot height, so that was not calculated. There was no area. And that area now is 429 square feet. So we're looking at approximately 650 square feet total expansion of the building.
I'm sorry, from last month, what was the new design? What's the full square footage, 3,000?
Do you have that number?
I mean, I did rough math and I am not a designer. I'm not a construction, I don't even want to tell you what my math was. But I mean, the rough math I did was square footage is the same from the prior design. So I want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
It was about 3,400.
3,400.
And now we're at?
Uh, 2,900.
Sorry, it was 30, it was around approximately 3,400 last for the original design and it's approximately 2,900 now?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Did I miss work?
I think we guessed.
I think you're asking a little bit.
I think we're just pulling things out of the air. I don't like that.
I mean, I just added the math on the plan to be considered.
My math could be wrong, but I got 3,371.
For the old one or the new one?
For new.
Yeah.
It's pretty much the same as the 3,400. Just my chance.
I mean, while you guys are doing some math, I'll come out on the pictures. I mean, I couldn't help but noticing some of the pictures that already, this house is the highest ceiling or has the highest roof line in one of these pictures that I'm looking at. And I do not see any house that has any sort of a third-story living. I don't see any houses that have that sort of, the dormers, the big barge protruding dormers. I mean, that's still creating a very large third-floor pleasant, presence there. Again, in this part of the neighborhood, there is no third, there are no houses.
Right, it's all two-story.
It's all two-story and the house behind it is one-story. You know, their view is going to change. And I understand we got letters from neighbors, but you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going from my training here, but my understanding was part of the decisions that we have to make is that the owners might not be the same in a year. And that, you know, they might sell their house in a year and you need to think about who's going to be living there in five years and how the people who don't receive notice are going to feel about a house this large going in, it's more than double there.
How about consistency with the character of the neighborhood?
I agree. And I mean, I know you showed that great neighborhood that they built at the end of Haincoy Road there, but that's pretty far away and I know the, their long time aren't crazy about it. And what worries me about putting in a house this big is that it's kind of setting a new norm of what that neighborhood is, where now suddenly everyone is going to want to be building these really large houses, where they just aren't there right now.
If I could just speak to the letters, I believe one of the folks on the board had recommended that we do solicit.
That was me.
Okay.
It was. And you know what, to be honest, I went back into my training manuals and stuff like that and kind of said, you know, and I mean, I think the question, you know, is from a letter from a trust, you know, do they live there full-time or is they someone who just rents the property and, you know, putting a great big mansion might improve the value of their property, but if they're living there year-round, you know, they might not feel so happy about having a large, you know, over 1,000 square foot house there.
The most important part is it needs to fall in line with the requirements of the ordinance. So if it comes down to being, I think number three is the issue. And that is, if somebody can get it before I do, please fill first.
The granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality.
Thank you. If anybody granted the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. And I think that's all, my personal opinion is it does.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate the work that's been done to, you know, meet our guidance based on the last meeting, but I don't think there really has been enough. Again, as Ms. Shu pointed out, this is a third-story home where there are two-story and single-story homes everywhere else.
Well, I mean, I feel like the board recommended that the house was just too big and I just feel like this is really not that much different. And I understand the design is different, but the size is ultimately not that different. And again, you provided a chart at the last meeting of how surrounding houses, which were, you know, the biggest one was just over 2,000 square foot. I mean, they didn't have a third floor.
What is the actual, have we determined what the actual square footage of this property is at this point? The proposed? Or is it still?
Do you want to give the numbers there?
Jeff McKenzie with Bear Brothers. The proposed square footage is 3,271 square feet. The existing square footage allowed right now is 2,995.27, which 1,500 of that is only finished.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you walk me through that again? You're talking about the existing structure?
The existing structure as it sits today is because you're allowed to finish the enclosed porches. Comes out to 2,995 square feet, .27. That's what's existing today.
You're saying under air or under heat? You're saying realistically, you're talking about not, not decks, but porches?
Talking about rooms and covered decks.
Okay.
That's without adding anything else onto this.
What's the covered deck definition, I guess? I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a handle on what you're talking about and I don't disagree necessarily.
Tell us about the square footage.
All right, so you're saying that deck, all right, and when you're comparing that to the other property, the new design, are you taking into consideration that that second floor is also square footage? Are you giving the same credit to that square footage on that one? No, as we described, you're consistent. All that deck that's covered over here, is that calculated into your equation? Because that would put, if the first floor is 2,000, then the second floor's got to be 4,000, right? Doubling up and then you've got a third floor.
The existing first floor right now is 1,499.382 square feet living. Then you can add 560.29 square feet of covered porch, which comes out to 2,059.62. The second floor is a total of 935.6458 square feet. The third floor isn't even counted because it's only six feet high. It's attic space.
That's the current?
That's existing.
Okay.
And that comes out to 2,995.27 square feet. That's what's there right now.
But what we need to look at is what is the living space right now, not what's the deck and what's the attic? We need to look at what the living space is.
What's the living space right now would be the 1,499 plus the 935, if you just take the 560 out.
Okay, so it's about 2,500.
2,500.
But we're looking at 3,300.
But the way you're going to look at it, the way, the way the code is and the way it's allowed, I, we could have come in and got a permit from Brian just to enclose it and then come to the board. So it's allowed. It's, it's living space. It's calculated space. That's how the code is written.
But it's not living space right now.
It is living space.
I understand you can, you can enclose it and make it living space, but it's not living space right now.
Well, they're talking about the existing structure.
Right.
Not altering it to an extent.
So again, all that, I guess, the question comes down to being, and it really, I'm going to put it where you two have a legitimate concern, you want to address, what, I come back to what was last month's square footage versus this? It sounds like they're the exact same square footage, or within 100 feet. Not the existing versus the new, but.
Do you have the plan from July? That's the question.
I don't have scrapping.
I don't have any information for you.
Okay, that's fair. I mean, that's fair. I think it's honest, so we can deal with honest. But in the same vein, I don't know how we can make, I think what I'm hearing from these two members is that it's, it's not, it's too big for your.
Well, I feel they changed the design of that house, but square footage, I mean, the size of the house is what we're talking about.
But I also think your, your point, the question around character, right? Looking at the photos that were presented, they're all two-story and very low pitched roofs. So the elevation of the peak on the buildings that are there, in my opinion, are lower than what you're proposing. Because if you look at the pitch on your roof and you have a third floor that is, that is habitable, I think it's going to, character-wise, it's going to change. I agree with that statement because this is truly a three-story home versus the other homes which are two-stories and they look like they're two-stories because of the pitch on the roof. So I think your photos kind of hurt you in that case because it does, in my opinion, change the character of the neighborhood.
To reiterate on that would be, we've got to put code-compliance staircases, okay? Which aren't there now. They will take up 156.55 square feet each. The second staircase will do the same. So this 300 square feet right there taking up for additional size that we need to make code compliance.
But I'm not talking about the square footage at all.
Oh, we're talking existing to proposed at this point. You take the 300 square feet out, you're back at 2,995.
Again, you're talking square footage. I'm not talking square footage. I'm talking the mass of the building, the height of the building.
The height of the building.
Yes.
Presentation is increasing four feet, right? The third floor, which is 490 square feet, which we don't have a third floor in there right now, because it's only six feet high, that's based at eight feet. That's where our mechanic's got to go because we can't put them under the porch, under the building anymore.
Again, I hear what you're saying. What I'm saying is the mass of the building, which is the, the sail, as if it were a sail like a boat, the size of that building and the height is going to make the character of that area change, in my opinion. I'm only one vote. I know you've got issues with mechanics. I know you've got issues with stairwells. I get it. But that doesn't change, when this building goes up, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood.
Right, and I feel like, again, you know, we gave you the opportunity to come back and kind of present evidence regarding the stairs and stuff like that. It's the first time I've heard about the stairs. I apologize that it's in here, but again.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what I'm looking at is the last month's information that was given, the largest property that they referenced was 2,438 for living area.
2,438.
So we're looking at a 3,400, 3,372 or whatever for this, as opposed to the largest one being 2,438 for almost 1,000 people.
I think you're hearing the tone.
I do, and I just wanted to clarify something on that. That chart is based on information on the assessor's database. And I know in going back and looking at that chart in the comparison for this building, we noted that the square footage that was shown on that chart really is the first floor and didn't take into account the second floor of the building. So not sure, I've never been in the other homes, but there may be a situation where those numbers may be a little bit different with regard to that. I certainly do respect your comments with regard to the building architecture and.
I personally love the design. I, I do. I personally like it, but I'm number one, one person and you get four that kind of feel differently and.
No, I like it.
I like the design. So the two of us that like the design. I do think it's inconsistent with the goals, which is, so I, I support my fellow board members on that because even though I might like the design, it's got nothing to do with what should, should not be approved. I mean, it's a very appealing design. I don't know how anybody could not like it. But that being said, it isn't consistent with the character of that neighborhood. And it's, I think, I go back, I would go back to.
I'd like to make a statement about, about the character. I think if you take a look at the character of the neighborhood from year to year to year, it's always changing. And it's, the homes are going to get larger and larger and larger. And if we don't start allowing that, we're not doing a favor to anybody.
But I don't.
But it doesn't change the question that we have to answer.
It comes back to what the requirements are. We have to meet, we have to meet the requirements.
We can, we can answer the question any way we want.
True.
You know? The character doesn't have to be exactly the same all the time.
No, but I feel like, you know, we're representing our neighbors and the people of our town and I, you know, I think about people who maybe aren't abutters, but again, live in that neighborhood. Are they going to be happy about this? Are they going to appeal this to the superior court? If they are aware that just, you know, 3,200 square foot house is going in and, you know, obstructing their view, which is in their outline. Part of the obligation.
And I can't, I can't argue Mr. Blazy's point, but the court doesn't look upon us and say, you know, they really like the design, so they let it go through. We're here to answer the questions as opposed, as presented to us and it's those four questions. So until they change the questions, I have to pass the straight face test. And if it goes to court, then it needs to be in our favor because that's what we're here for. We're not here to represent the family that wants to put the home up. We're here to represent the town. And the question is, does it change the character? And I believe it does.
So I think we have two options at this point. We either allow you to table it once more or we proceed forward and vote on it because there is definitely a mix of opinions here and it may pass and may not.
Sure.
So those are two options.
Well, just a couple of things I have to say before we do that is, one, we can't be the ones to change the character of the neighborhood. We can't just say, oh, that looks good and we're just going to ignore that question. We can't do that. And I would have liked to seen something that showed a little bit more regard for what we were looking for. I think we come in and we're under 100 feet or under 50 feet. That's not really showing a lot of regard of what we're looking for. We were looking for something probably more in that 2,800, 2,700 square foot range that put it in with most of these other properties. And I just don't see that that happened. It, it's pretty much the same as it was. It's pretty designed, but it's pretty much the same as it was. There wasn't really much taken into account from our comments.
My advice is you table.
Well, let me, let me see.
Yes.
My name is Kevin Bishop. I'm the brother of the applicant. When we were here last, you didn't like the third floor, so the architect changed it, changed the design to two and a half. So this is a two and a half story house. It's, it's, there's a two and a half story house there now and it's always been the biggest house in the neighborhood. It was the first house in the neighborhood, 1890.
And, and I suppose based on that argument, you could build it just the same size and no one would have a problem here.
Well, we could take, we could.
But I guess, sir, what we're dealing with is not what you're talking about. What I'm suggesting, and we'll take a vote right now and I'll guarantee you it'll fail and you'll have to wait a year. My advice is that you table and move it and come back and give the board the respect that we deserve.
I feel like we've already given them the opportunity to come back.
I'm, I'm not a believer in penalizing people. I don't think it's healthy. It's a small town. I don't think there's a reason to do that. I think we work well together as a board and I think we need to work with the community. But that being said, I don't have a problem with saying, this doesn't work. And there's four people on this board that are immediately saying that. I'm questionable and that one person's saying yes. That's not good numbers.
And I would say, take into account what we're trying to tell you. Don't come back to us with a 3,200 or 3,350 square foot building. Look to see what you can come up with that's going to be livable for you. You're already the biggest house. Get it somewhere as close to where it is now.
My advice is also talk to the code enforcement officers. They'll help you.
And what may be misconception on my part, and I might be visualizing it wrong, if you could overlay digitally on the photo of the existing home, what the new building would look like, maybe it doesn't look like a massive change.
That's a good point.
But based on what I'm seeing from the presentation, it looks very big from. But based on what I'm seeing from the presentation, it looks very big from those elevations compared to what I'm seeing on the photos. So, maybe if you overlaid, you know, just laid on top of that.
Maybe we're wrong.
Ailed the building, I could be all whacked, and maybe it looks identical.
Right, give a comparison, like a digital rendering showing the existing, the proposed, and as Mr. Loizel said, you know, the perception is everything.
I mean, again, I don't think anybody has a problem with the design. It's just, I think the sail analogy is a very good analogy. So, I'm going to move that we table.
Ms. Chairman, if I could just ask one question on that?
Yeah.
We will be seeking a tabling motion. We do appreciate that. For clarity, the existing building numbers that had been discussed and are actually included in the assessor's database do not include the covered porch area. That area is roughly 500 square feet. We'd like to have the opportunity to include that as part of our program, because it is very key to that. So, just want to clarify that when we talk about expansion, that we do have the ability to include that as sort of a base number in that. So, in quantifying, you know, whatever the square footage is, we account for the fact that 500 square feet of that is actually already a covered porch, it's already on the site. It's just simply putting walls in that area.
I think, as one of the representatives from Roseberry said, what was it, 29-something? If you covered those and put those into living area?
2995.
I wouldn't have as much of a problem with that as I do 33.
Very well.
The, the other thing is, I think, you've got to compare apples to apples. I mean, you're going to have to do the same thing on the new project and count those stacks in the calculation, which I'm sure weren't calculated when, with these numbers we have. That being said, I don't think it's about the numbers. I think it's about presentation. And so, I think the numbers are a gauge there, you know, they're a gauge, but I don't think the real issue is. The issue is, does it fit with the community as it stands? And I think, that doesn't mean it has to be backwards. It doesn't have to be from 1900s. And I think we can talk about bringing it up to a larger, whatever the reasonable standard is, but it's not maximum benefit. It's not supposed to be maximum benefit. It's supposed to be reasonable. And that's what this, that's what the relief is for, reasonable, not maximum. And I would argue that what we've seen is pretty close to maximum. So, I'm going to move to table. A second. All in favor? Four opposed? One? Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll catch you in the next meeting. We're just, table one for one of them.
Were they going to follow the next meeting after?
Doesn't come back if we follow.
I'm just saying, were we rearranged it around? Where are they going to follow?
It'll be, yeah, not sure. We'll go right to it.
Who's second is the most? I did.
Okay. Thank you, Board, for indulging.
What did you, what did you say at the end? It's table till next month?
And if it doesn't come back, it's off.
Did you ask them if they wanted to come back next month, or if they wanted to wait?
Just, did you guys want, I'm assuming you want to come back next month? Thank you. All right, so one meeting, thank you, Board. Thank you for, for, thank you for working so hard at this meeting. This was a tough meeting for a variety of reasons. Anybody have anything that they want to add or to discuss?
I have a couple of comments. I, I think it's important that, as we're going through here, to really watch the, I'm suffering from it right now, but be concise. And every time you say, make a motion, or I move to, or as soon as, the second you say, I make a motion, you're already in that, that stage of, we're making a motion, this is what's going on the record. So, when you say make a motion, I move to accept appeal number whatever, whatever, or for these three reasons, A, B, and C. Keep them as concise as possible, because that's what goes into the record as far as what a court would see later on. I think we have a tendency to, sort of, we state the motion, and then we go on for the long explanation that we just went through previously. That's already been discussed.
Well, I'm certainly guilty of that today.
And, and it's, and it's, and it happens, and no, we, it's, we, we get excited, and that's perfectly okay. I'm guilty of it myself, I just saying it as sort of a, and myself included, you know, let's be more conscious of that, and be concise and be clear. That's all I got.
And Brian, what do, oh, what do you want us to do around the?
Um, yeah, do you guys, when something's tabled, do you keep them? Or do you?
I keep them, but they keep on putting them in the package.
I put it back in the package.
Oh, I do keep it.
You put it back in your, in your bag?
Yeah.
Why don't you do that? Put it back in your bag.
You want everything?
I mean, just the ones that are left.
Yeah, the one, well.
And like Karen sorted out?
Yeah, the ones that we didn't get. You'll get them back, you'll get them back a couple of weeks before the, before the hearing.
We're going to get new ones also?
No. Wow, you'll get the new, any new information submitted. It gets hard to track it when things get tabled, but, you know.
I just want to say, you know, I assume it's hard when people come with like five representatives, and you give them a second chance, and they, you know, they pick up the whole meeting, and, you know, with other people waiting, and they weren't able to see, and, you know, they, you know, we gave them recommendations, representative, in front of us consistently. And so, I just feel like, you know, in regards to the structure, our client, and the other residents who are applying for applications here, like, we gave them a chance, and I mean, especially in this last, I feel like, I did not take our recommendations at all, and